Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Tuesday, September the 7th, 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The invocation this evening will be given by the Elder Prince Covington of Life Bridge Church. Good evening, and again, thank you for coming by to get us started.
Thank you, sir. Council, appreciate the opportunity. Let's bow our heads and pray. So Father, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together in this room to discuss matters, Lord, that pertain to our citizens of this community. We ask that when all things are discussed, Lord, that wisdom will abound, that the knowledge that we have that been used to the benefit, not only just for South Haven, but the surrounding community. We ask, amen, Lord, that the audience in this room, give them the heart and mind to listen attentively, that as they ask questions, Lord, that their answers, the questions, amen, will be solidified, that they walk out of here satisfied that things will be handled. Bless the council as they reach down, Father God, into the laws of man, but most importantly, Father God, that you get the glory in all things. Blessed again, and we praise you for it. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you again for coming. And now if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Roll call. Megan?
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. That takes us to the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. That takes us to the consent agenda, items A through J.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through J.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? None seeing none, this is a roll call vote?
Arnold.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to old business. The City Council, we ask to consider the following actions regarding the proposed text amendments to Sections 201, 1403, and 1714 of the zoning ordinance. First, we need to host a public hearing, so if we want to start with that.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and second to open a public hearing. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is open. Travis, good evening.
Good evening. So this is the continuation of what you started at the last meeting, which was to schedule this public hearing tonight to consider these two draft ordinances in front of you. The first one would require that folks coming forward for site plan review include the location of any trees with a trunk diameter of more of six inches or more that they intend to remove from the property. That would also then incorporate the city arborist into the site plan review process. Additionally, the other ordinance that you have would regulate the use and location of permanent outdoor fire pits, permanent outdoor fireplaces, and permanent outdoor barbecues. As was mentioned at the last meeting, there were a couple of changes that were incorporated into this draft that you see in front of you tonight. Those changes were printed in red, and so you see the overall changes to the ordinance or amendments to the ordinance as proposed, highlighted in yellow, but those changes in red were those that were asked for by the planning commission and what are also requested by the city attorney at the last meeting that they be incorporated. Prepare to answer any questions. Otherwise, I think you've opened the public hearing.
No, it's good. This is a public hearing at this point. Anybody from the public have any questions regarding this issue? All's quiet. Pebbles. Oh, sorry, come on up.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I just reiterate the comments that I made last time. I don't want to take up everyone's time. I think I was pretty clear with my comments last time, and to the extent that they have not been addressed, I'm disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public questions, comments? I want a motion to close public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's closed. Council, questions, comments on the issue?
Just wondering what the thought process was with the trunk diameter of six inches or greater that the applicant is proposing to remove. Wondering what that thought process was in the planning commission?
That was, it was an item that the master plan had identified, that tree locations be included. Just the concern being of the planning commission that there were sites where trees were, it'd be, the planning commission would like to know when large amounts or large trees, historic trees, are being removed. The six inch diameter, I will be honest with you, I was, as I was out the one that drafted the ordinance language, I can check with the drafter and get you an answer on that one, but unfortunately, right now, I don't have an answer where the six inch specifically came from.
I guess my concern is, I'm just, the planning commission or the site plan approval wouldn't be, wouldn't be able to mark or stop someone from removing a tree from their property, would it? This doesn't, ordinance doesn't do that, correct?
The ordinance does not prevent the removal, it just asks for the location that it be noted on the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
My question was, we got an email from Mary Lynn Boogie, and did staff have a chance to review that? Did that? She had some questions about some verbiage in the fire pit section.
Yeah, so her questions were related to the word, to the use of the word shall versus may. May being identified in the zoning ordinance as permissible, shall being identified as essentially mandatory, making it so that that is only, the only items that can be burned. I'll defer to the city attorney on that one to see whether or not that's a change that can be made here without having to go back to the planning commission. I'll turn it over.
I believe you could make that change, but I also don't think it's necessary. It's may only, which is, doesn't have any different meaning than shall only. Those words have different meaning when they're not accompanied by other verbiage, but here the only makes clear that you're giving a exclusive list of what can and can't be done. So I don't think there's any need for a change there.
Okay. I would also wonder about enforcement.
That's, yeah, that's a good question.
I believe the word is can only versus shall only.
Can only, that would have the same, the same meaning and interpretation. When I'm drafting things, I try to use the shall and the may, but I think the planning consultant drafted this one, and it's functionally the same thing.
The other item that was brought forward was a request to change the use of the word logs to dry seasoned wood with regard to what can and cannot be burned. That's also one, I guess, I'll, again, I'll defer to the city attorney on whether or not that's a change of material enough in nature that it would need to go back to the planning commission for reconsideration, or if that's a minor change that can be made here this evening.
Doesn't need to be changed, though. I mean, my only issue is that with logs, as much rain as we've had in July, no one's burning anything all of July. So I guess that would be my only issue with that versus dry seasoned wood, and how dry are we talking? How long is that?
That one does seem like a maybe more material change, and that could be interpreted to be limiting what people can burn in a way the planning commission didn't look at. I probably recommended that one go back to the planning mission if the council's inclined to make that change. Again, those, that suggestion was based on EPA recommendation. It's not something that the city would have to necessarily incorporate into its zoning ordinance.
If I may, furthermore, there's other things in our zoning ordinance, as well as the coordinate ordinances, that prohibit what people may or may not burn, such as leaves, rubbish, building materials, other things like that are already listed in your code of ordinances of things that they cannot burn.
The city hasn't adopted fire code, and that's really where this type of thing is typically addressed. This is really going to where you can and can't put the structures, so it's kind of a secondary issue for this type of ordinance.
And I would tend to agree with you. It's very difficult to ascertain what's dry, and I don't envision us sending out a code enforcement officer to ascertain that issue, so.
A piece of wood. Find out.
And if we can't figure out what's in the ordinance, how are we going to enforce it?
Right. Any other comments? Otherwise, I need a motion to approve amendments to Sections 201, 1403, and 1714 of the zoning ordinance.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment to Sections 201, 1403, and 1714 of the zoning ordinances.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Me, I'm opposed.
Opposed, very good. Motion passes. Next, we have new business. City Council, we ask to consider the approval of the following special event applications. Let's work through them. First, we have the amendment to special event 2021-14, Chalk the Walk 2021, to be held Thursday, September the 16th, 2021, from 5:00 PM until 7:30 PM at Elkenberg Park and portions of the Van Buren Trail. So if you guys want to give me a motion, we'll go through them.
I'll make a motion to amend special event 2021-14, Chalk the Walk 2021, to be held Thursday, September 16th, 2021, from 5:00 to 7:30.
Second.
We got a motion, we got a second. All right, Kate, tell us what changed.
Sure, this is a coordinated effort between South Haven Public Schools and Brownstone Healthcare Group, I believe it's Safe Kids from, Safe Kids South Haven. They're requesting to use Elkenberg Park on Wednesday, September 16th, so this is a change from the earlier date that was approved for June, and this would be, as they put in here, a September 16th date where they would chalk and walk, starting in Elkenberg Park and then using parts of the Van Buren Trail.
All right, very good. Any public comments on this issue? Quiet. Council comments? Nothing. We've got a motion, we've got a second to approve special event 2021-14, Chalk the Walk. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are going. Next, recognition of Saturday, October the 20th, 2021? Oh, sorry, sorry. October the 30th, sorry. Never mind what's written down. 2021 from 5:30 PM until 7:30 PM as the suggested date and time for trick or treating for Halloween as established by Resolution 05-38.
Make a motion to Saturday, October 30th, 2021, from 5:30 to 7:30 as the suggested date for trick or treating as established by Resolution 05-38.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second, Saturday, October the 30th. Public, I guess Kate, you want to say anything other than it's trick or treating?
It is, yes, it is Saturday, October 30th, so apologies on that.
That's good.
And, yep, that would be the suggested date and time for trick or treating, yes.
Hopefully they can get back out and do it again after a weird year last year, so good. Public questions, comments, trick or treating? What candy do you buy? Wanted to have it? You're good. Okay, council questions, comments?
I had a six foot candy slide last year.
Oh, you did a slide?
Yeah.
Why does it say suggested date?
Well, because really, it's a suggested date and time. I mean, it's a national holiday, really, we're just saying, here's the suggested date and time, but really, it's, it's a national holiday, so it could happen whenever people wanted it to happen, so.
Okay. All good? All right. Motion, second to recognize Saturday, October the 30th, 5:30 to 7:30 for trick or treating. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We're trick or treating. Next, special event 2021-24, Prayer Walk, to be held on Saturday, September the 11th, 2021, from 12:00 PM until 3:00 PM, starting from First Congregational Church with two routes around the downtown, meeting at Kalamazoo and Huron intersection, and proceeding to Elkenberg Park.
I'll make a motion to approve special event 2021-24, the Prayer Walk, to be held Saturday, September 11th, 2021, from 12:00 to 3:00.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. So this was Pastor Joe Wilkins and Resurrection Life Ministries have come together with many other pastors around town to come together with this prayer walk idea to happen on September 11th, this Saturday, starting at noon from First Congregational Church. And as we mentioned in the staff report, this would come with two routes kind of encirculating the downtown, almost like ARMS. And Pastor Joe, if he'd like to come up and talk more about this, we have a route that would be going north, kind of the church street, crossing Broadway, down Quaker to Center to Williams, meeting a second group at Kalamazoo and Huron. The second group would be crossing Broad, I'm sorry, crossing Phoenix, Pearl, going down Huron, crossing Broadway, and then meeting up. So once met there, there would be a prayer, met there, a prayer group there, and then heading south on Kalamazoo, and then having prayer stops along the way, keeping safe, so trying to make sure that we're not disrupting traffic, but also keeping people safe, because that's the whole point of having a good prayer walk, and then having a unity prayer at Elkenberg Park.
Exactly.
All right, so here's.
Good evening, Pastor Joe.
Kate pretty much explained it all. It is a community, a unity, unity in action, community prayer walk that the Lord placed upon my heart to have behind a lot of the recent incidents that we, that challenged our city over the last couple of months. No particular one, but along with COVID and all the things that are challenging our businesses, our schools, residents, I felt that it was important that we, you know, sent up some prayers for the residents, for business owners, for the community at large. And so I got with Pastor Mylan and Sharma, and so it will be across the interdenominational participation for Saturday, with some stops, as Kate said, on Huron Street, Van Buren Street, Monroe Street, and Elkenberg Street, with the final unity prayer in the park with a little service. We will convene, we'll actually start at, as she said, at Pastor Jeffrey Dick's Church, I think it's on Phoenix. We'll start gathering around 11:30 and leave there with escort from the police department around 12:00, finish up around 3:00. There will be transportation offered for those that don't want to make that walk back to Pastor Jeffrey Dick's Church. Pastor Mylan has secured some busing company somewhere around here, I forgot the name, I don't have it in my notes, but they will be transporting individuals that participated back to First Congregational Church after the walk. There will be two truck loads that would provide water in the stops at Huron Street, and I think at Monroe Street, so water will be given along the routes as well. We won't be in any of the intersections, we will gather on the side, on the side streets. So we make sure that we would take the crowd out in the intersection at Huron, Van Buren, Monroe, and Elkenberg.
Very good. Any questions? Thank you for organizing it, by the way. Appreciate it. No other questions? I think we're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public questions or comments about the prayer walk to be held? Seeing none? Council question, comments? None? All right. We have a motion and a second to approve special event 2021-24, the Prayer Walk, to be held this Saturday. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's approved. And then finally, special event 2021-25, Ford Expedition Commercial Filming, to be held on Thursday, September the 9th, 2021, from 11:00 AM until 9:00 PM on Center Street near Williams Street and the Dykman Bridge.
Make a motion to approve special event 2021-25, the Ford Expedition Commercial Filming Request.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Who's in the film?
Well, a car, actually.
No cameos, no cameos for?
Well, maybe you can ask now.
No, no, I'm good, I'm good.
So this is a filming request, so they're asking to you to do intermittent street closures while they set up shots, do the shots, and then reset the shots. They have a 40-person crew that they are going to have to provide parking off-street, and they have a couple shots that they want to do on Center Street as well as on the Baskiel Bridge, but Mr. Krieger has been made aware that the Baskiel Bridge goes up on the half an hour, and it doesn't wait for anyone. So we've also had a request to use some city services that we were not able to provide without overtime. He's offered to cover those city services and staff overtime as part of this very short notice request. Also to note that these are, this is a request for street closure, but this is not, is not a sidewalk closure, so those businesses are not going to be impacted. Mr. Krieger?
And temporary street closure, right? We're not, it's not shut down from 11:00 tonight.
No, 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 these are intermittent, so this will be. Yes.
Yeah.
I've worked with Katie here, and what we're trying to do is, on Center Street in front of Michigan Theater, I made arrangements with the Michigan Theater to use that as a location where a car pulls up. We have contracted, I guess, with the city for police coverage, we'll pay all the overtime for everything, the city will incur no costs. The Dykman Bridge, the same thing. What we'll do is have an officer on each end of the road. It's sort of like when a road repair is going on. They'll hold traffic for five minutes or so. We have a camera car and a Ford vehicle that will drive on either side of the lane, cross Dykman, pull off, we'll let traffic go as we reset. This may go on for about two or three hours, but the interruptions will be no more than five minutes and maybe three within the hour, maybe four. I'm completely aware of, this is a last minute request, and that this is a busy downtown. Same thing with Center Street. We want to try and do the same thing. I'm going to, I've talked to a number of the businesses on there, like the New Holland Brewery, the coffee shop, some of the other businesses were closed when I was around. Tomorrow, I'm going to make sure I hit everyone. If there is somebody who is affected business-wise, we'll offer them an inconvenience fee. We're going to allow people to still traverse Center Street. There'll be some parking in front of New Holland. We want to try and control some of the angle parking across the street from Michigan Theater. And then the only other issue which I need to figure out, where I can park some vehicles, and we had talked about behind TCF Center, but we haven't made arrangements yet. So it should go pretty smoothly, and I believe we're not going to be the full 11 to 9, we'll probably be like 3 to 9 for the interruptions. Any questions?
Yeah. I actually, I have a business right next to New Holland, Emma's Boutique. So the sidewalk itself is actually going to stay open.
Absolutely. Sidewalk itself will be open, Center Street will remain open, only when we need to shoot will we close it, and it'll be interrupted for, like I said, no one, five minutes at a time.
I know there's great coffee right there, too, so, just saying.
All right. Excellent. So I'll probably see you tomorrow, then.
Yeah.
I'll make sure you're okay with it.
Very good. I guess council questions while he's here with us?
Just hoping that you keep to the five minute schedule.
Absolutely. It'll probably be less than, because we're only going about a half a mile to a mile at most on these routes, and that we're going to be doing about 20 miles an hour. So if you think about how, how much time it takes you to cross Dykman, that's essentially maybe half that speed. If you were going 20 miles an hour, 10 miles an hour to cross two blocks, that would be the amount of time. Five minutes would be the max.
And then my only other concern would be the request for the police blocking off the roads if we have another emergency. Is that why we're calling in for overtime for the police?
Yes, so this does not take away the road patrol that is designated for, you know, each shift. This would be overtime that would be designated for this event only, and that's why they would be covering the cost for those two, the two extra officers to cover that.
So no services will be lacking during those times.
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
And just for that also, if there is an emergency call and they're closest to it, we don't want to prevent anybody from not receiving an emergency call because our police officer's working on something else. His first dedication is to the safety of this community, secondary is helping us.
Very good.
Thank you.
I'll just say, thanks for thinking of our community, so it's kind of cool.
Well, thank you. South Haven will be in some YouTube commercials for Ford in a few months. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Are there any public questions, comments?
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. This sounds very exciting, and I was just curious, will spectators be allowed? And, because the sidewalks will be open, and I see this as actually a boom for the stores nearby.
I will let him address that.
It is public streets, so anybody who's there, great. We will ask for no photography on phones and things like that, if possible. I can't prevent that, and certainly, yeah, public has a right, but as a courtesy to us, we're asking that, you know, cell phone footage or anything like that would be shown of the vehicles. They're, they're brand new, so you can come look at them.
Look at them.
But Ford is trying to keep it completely under wraps.
Get your sneak peek here.
Anybody else?
Anybody else? Very good. Thank you again, appreciate it. All right. If there's no other questions anywhere, don't see any. We have a motion, we have a second to approve special event 2021-25, which is the Ford Expedition Commercial Filming, to be held on Thursday, September the 9th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. And you are welcome to sneak on out and go enjoy your evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
I'll take care of the weather for you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, next. City Council, we ask to consider the following actions regarding a first amendment to a 425 agreement with South Haven Charter Township for the development at 1875 Phoenix Street. So first, we need to hold a public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion, second to open the public hearing. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is open. All right, Travis, so it's Three Blondes, right?
Yep, so this was, this is a proposed amendment to what you originally did in the fall of 2017, at the request of Mr. Ray Vanderzee, the owner of the Vanderzee Motorplex, who was at the time working to get the Three Blondes Brewing Establishment off the ground. A part of doing that was going to require him to construct a detention basin on the lot next to his property that housed the Motorplex and eventually the brewery. And at his request, the city worked with the township to come up with a 425 agreement, which would essentially bring those parcels for a 10-year period into the city specifically for zoning purposes, so that he had a single point of contact while he was going through the development process. It was discovered this summer by city and township staff that there was, there are three parcels that were included in the township that ran to the corner of 71st and a Half in Phoenix. Only one narrow strip of that was included in the original agreement, and so the two entities have basically been, were operating under the assumption for the last three and a half years that, that all of the parcels had been captured. It was discovered that only one had. So what you're seeing before you tonight is an attempt to fix that essentially and get those, those other parcels retroactively brought in under that agreement.
Sounds good. This is a public hearing. Any public questions or comments? Nothing, nothing, nothing.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I was just curious, I looked at the previous agenda back in 2017, and it looked like you made the decision at a it looked like you made the decision at a subsequent meeting, and so I wasn't sure what notice had been given, if this was the only notice, and whether you think it's sufficient or not for this amendment. It does appear minor, but I didn't, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and just as a general matter, and this applies to all the staff reports I noticed in the agenda, they're lacking a date and the name of the preparer, so it would be beneficial if that could be included in future staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Kate, the noticing issue?
Yes, we, I talked with the city attorney about whether this need to have a whole, need to have a whole public notice and go through the whole process as if this was a new four-twenty-five, and they suggested this was sufficient to, this amendment to the four-twenty-five was sufficient.
Correct, so the statute just requires public notice, doesn't have any specific mailing requirements, is my, is my memory. And based on that, providing, you know, putting this in the agenda provides the notice required by the act, so we think we're satisfying the notice requirements.
Okay, sounds good. Any other public questions, comments? All right, see, now I wanna close this?
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it is closed. So next, city council, we ask to consider the approval of Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash nineteen, which is a resolution authorizing approval of the First Amendment to the Development Cooperation Agreement with South Haven Charter Township.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing the approval of the First Amendment to the Development Cooperation Agreement with South Haven Charter Township.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Council, questions, comments? Appears to be pretty routine cleanup, more than anything else, I mean, and so, I think it's pretty straight ahead for me. So I will vote in favor if there's no other questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. All right, let's roll on, next item. City Council, we ask to consider the introduction of the proposed rezoning of properties located at eight fifty, eight thirty-six, and eight twenty-two Indiana Avenue, from I-one Light Industrial to R-one-A Single Family Residential, and set a public hearing on proposed rezoning to occur at the September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting at seven P.M.
So this is the introduction tonight, so.
I make a motion to consider the introduction of the proposal rezoning of properties located at eight fifty, eight thirty-six, and eight twenty-two Indiana Avenue, from Light Industrial to R-one-A Single Family Residential.
Second.
Very good, we have a motion, we have a second. Travis, thank you.
So this item was considered by the Planning Commission in June of two thousand twenty. This was a request brought by the, the owner of four oh one Center LLC, to have what was two twenty-nine Elkenberg Street rezoned to, to R-one-A in accordance with what the master plan contemplated on the future land use map at the time, as it considers it, or had contemplated it in the future as a single-family residential. For a variety of reasons, that, that item, while it was recommended to the city council for approval by the Planning Commission, didn't make it to the city council for consideration at the time, and so what we're attempting to do, to do now is take the next step in that process. Now, since the Planning Commission considered this item, the, the owner had split the lot into three separate parcels, and so that's why you see eight fifty, eight thirty-six, and eight twenty-two Indiana in front of you this evening. These parcels basically are sized perfectly to be R-one-A lots, they have a fifty-foot width, and again, as, as I said, the future land use map saw these as being used as single-family residential in the future, so.
Very good. All right. Anybody have any questions, while Travis is up there? Nothing there? All right. Any public questions or comments on this one?
Mary Hasley, seven twenty-six North Shore Drive. Due to my limited time, I will just highlight some of my concerns, I'll submit them in writing subsequently. I do support the rezoning of these parcels, but I do object to the process. I do believe the staff report is inaccurate. The planning, it states that the Planning Commission approved the rezoning, but they can only recommend the rezoning, and also the applicant is no longer the owner of the property, the property was sold, I believe it closed on July twenty-third of this year, and I was just curious what the variety of reasons for the lengthy delay. The zoning ordinances indicate the recommendation would be made two weeks after the Planning Commission votes on the recommendation, and we are well past that. I also noticed that the zoning map was updated in August two thousand twenty and does have that approved zoning, although it hadn't gone to the city council. And I was wondering if the city council has informed the original applicant and the new owner, and if so, when, and if not, why not? And I was wondering if you could show more detail with regard to the delay because of the original applicant and whether the current owner were advised of today's hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, any thoughts on the owner switch, I mean, about that?
I can have Travis come up and explain if he's had comment, or contact with Mr. Sevich, who was the owner at the time. I know that he's been actively trying to sell these parcels, and I do know that he's been actively selling them as R-one-A, so we were just trying to make sure that we're making sure that these are R-one-A, because right now, without the city council process, they are not actually R-one-A, so we're trying to finish that process. And as you know, we kind of had some transition in June of last year, and we also had quite a bit of difference, different people filling in different roles. As you know, I stepped into the city manager role, and was also kind of trying to have other people step into my role as the assistant city manager, or at least covering my, my duties with the Planning Commission. And also, at the same time, Travis was moving from the city clerk into the zoning ministry role, so with the, with the moving around, yes, some things did get messed, so unfortunately, this was one of them.
So the building department was contacted by one of the owners of one of the new parcels right now. That was how I kind of discovered that these were, had not fully been done yet. It pulled up in my system as an I, or an industrial parcel. And so, I've notified that property owner that this was, that this was going to take place. We've not spoken with Mr. Sevich. I am not aware if he is still the owner of the other two parcels. I guess, Kate, you said he's actually trying to sell them, so it, I mean, it sounds to me as though he does own them. We will, we will be in touch with him then to, certainly to make him aware of the, the public hearing that do occur in two weeks.
And then, anything else you wanna just say about kind of what was envisioned for these parcels? I mean, you said it earlier, but just to make sure we're clear what the thought process was.
Well, I can tell you, Mr. Sevich has always envisioned that he would take the, the outlot that was from two twenty-nine Elkenberg, which was the over, the larger Overton lot. This was always a separate parcel, but it had the same street address of two twenty-nine Elkenberg, of course, it faced on Indiana. Mr. Sevich always had the intention of dividing these into smaller lots and selling them. He had that when we talked previous to two thousand twenty, to, I think, in two thousand nineteen. So this was his intention, and of course, as you can see, he's gone through the process to, to divide the lots and then to, to do the rezoning, and as I know, it has been actively marketed. I wouldn't be surprised if he has found some sellers, but as to where, where they're at with the selling right now, I'm not sure, but we can go ahead and check.
All right. Thanks, I might need you to get in a minute. Any other, I'll see if there's any other public questions, we'll see if there's council. Any other public questions? So come on up, just state your name and address.
Dan Agnello, nine sixty-four Everett Parkway. This, this property is, wants to be zoned R-one, but environmentally, it's still only mitigated for industrial, same as Overton. So I'm not sure about the process. I saw the purchase order for Overton, and they said they're gonna remediate it after they get a purchase order, but I would think that maybe the property would be, you know, environmentally suited for residential before the property is sold. But it doesn't sound like that's being discussed on this property, but it is being discussed on Overton, and that's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you.
The city never took title to this property. This was always retained by Mr. Sevich or by the original owner who sold to Mr. Sevich, so I cannot, cannot say what is the environmental on this, because the city has never had title to this property.
Okay, that'll be something that would be, could be looked into as part of the process, I guess I'm kind of curious where we're at with that. I mean, we know what's, we know what's happening on the neighboring.
We have, we can always share what we know about the property that the city has purchased, but as for the, of course, the adjacent outlot, we, we can share that with Mr., whoever is the successor and interest, but again, the city has never owned these lots, so I can't say what has been the future use or the future indication of them, because that was never shared, because we never purchased them.
And if, if it is contaminated, and they're gonna do residential development, Eagle would be involved in, in that process to make sure it's brought up to the residential standards, but the city's not typically involved in, in that process unless it's a parcel that the city is currently owning and selling, so that's the distinction between this and Overton.
Sounds good. Any other question, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but the commercial properties is required to get a baseline environmental test?
They're not technically required, but it's almost always done, because it avoids liability when you purchase the property, so the owner would.
But a residential property isn't required? Or neither one is required?
It's never actually required that you get the phase one, it's something you do to protect yourself from liability, so, so most owners will do it, and it's certainly a good idea to do it. But if there's environmental contamination that's known on the property, then before a certificate of occupancy can be issued, Eagle would be involved in doing a review of the property to make sure that it's brought to residential standards.
So the only way the buyer is protected is to get the BEA done, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Lisa Beck, eight seventy-nine Monroe Boulevard. I just have one question on why those three properties would be being zoned residential, and the Overton property would be the M, I'm not sure I have the right, M-one-three or whatever, but for multi-use. When we had the meeting before with Overton, we were told that all the properties around were, you know, the M, the multi-use fit in better with the neighborhood, but now the properties that are right there are being said that it's better to be residential, so I don't understand that.
The actual residential, I don't know if you wanna just, I mean, 'cause it's single lots, I don't know if you just wanna?
Well, they are single lots, and I don't have the future land use map in front of me, but I do know that there is, the three outlots, or the one lot, as it was at the time the future land use map was drafted, could be, could have shown that it was gonna be future single-family residential. However, the Overton lot was, has, was shaded as a transitional area for, for study, that was the source of the charrette. And as part of the charrette, a number of plans were, were developed, but two were placed as, in the master plan, one showing high-density residential and one showing recreation. So that gave the city a multitude of options as to how to redevelop the property.
And for these three, a single-family residential makes sense, I mean.
Right, that follows. Now, if we are looking at the entire Overton parcel, plus the Overton outlot, which is the incident, the item that we're discussing under this item.
Yep.
It does about RM-one, as well as R-one residential, or a single-family residential. So there's a number of different options here, and if, if you'd like, we can show you a zoning map, if, if the council would like to see that.
So you're saying that the owner, if he wanted to, could be asking to put a condo on all three lots?
That's correct.
In this case, he wants to go residential, because he thinks he can sell it, three separate lots, probably make more money.
That's correct.
Yep.
Does council wanna see a map, or? No?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I don't need one.
That's good. Anything else? If not, well, any other public questions, and then we'll see if there's any other council questions. Looks like public's quiet, all right. Council questions before we vote it up? And again, this is just the introduction tonight. Other questions? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to introduce the proposed rezoning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The introduction is made. Thanks, Travis. All right, how are we doing for time? Good. Next item. Sorry.
Eleven.
My eyes are, it's the end of a day. City Council, we ask to consider the introduction of the proposed rezoning of two twenty-nine Elkenberg Street, a property under the city's ownership, from its current I-one Light Industrial classification to RM-one, multiple-family residential, and set a public hearing on the item to occur at the city council's regular meeting on September the twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, at seven P.M.
I'll make a motion to introduce the proposed rezoning of two twenty-nine Elkenberg, a property that's under the city's ownership, from I-one Light Industrial to RM-one Multi-Family Residential.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. And Travis, you're back. Good evening, again.
So this item was, was looked at by the Planning Commission during the month of August. The Planning Commission's recommendation to the city council was to rezone this site to RM-one, Multi-Family Residential. This site, as Kate mentioned previously, was identified by the master plan as a transition zone to be used as either recreational or residential in the future. Obviously, it was an industrial site before, with the demolition of that, that building, along with the general trend of that, of that portion of the city, it appears that the city there is moving more towards residential uses. Additionally, like I said, the, the master plan identified this as potentially a residential site, and so that is why the Planning Commission made the recommendation that it made.
Sounds good. And this is, just so we're all clear, this is priority number two, as we set our priorities earlier in the year, and one of our priorities specifically calls out that we're gonna look to plan and implement the redevelopment of the former Overton site. So that's, we've been discussing this for a while, so I appreciate that we're finally gonna discuss it tonight. We've got a motion, we've got a second. Council, you wanna hear public comments first? I got some nods. All right, public, questions, comments? I know you're here to talk about it tonight, so if you'd like, we wanna hear what everyone has to say. If you should come on up, state your name, state your address, and you'll have up to five minutes, and we'll do our best to get everybody through, questions answered, and moving on, so, good evening.
My name is Mark Hamburg, eight hundred Indiana Avenue. I know that created, sure, created a little bit of controversy when I handed this out, I could see everybody kind of reading through it. What I wanted to do is just go through my thought process on why I think this is spot zoning relative to what's being done there. Contrary, just real quick, contrary to the legal notice that I received for the rezoning, the Overton property is not adjacent to RM-one. RM-one is across the street on Elkenberg or across the bike trails, not truly adjacent to the property, and it does not surround Overton. What I did is I handed out, I put together the graphic to kind of show just how much of that is R-one-A and R-one-B versus RM-one on that multi-family zoning. The properties that surround the Overton property has a density of five-point-seven units per acre. That's equivalent to the R-one-B zoning. It's very, it's the lowest-density residential zoning you have. The, I've got an excerpt from the zoning code, that the RM-one district is designed to accommodate those types of low-rise, multiple-dwelling structures, which are similar in terms of use and structural character to single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings. It's actually three paragraphs in that front-end section on section five hundred, and it goes into other details to what that property is to be used for as RM-one, and I think one of the highlights is the fact that it's supposed to be a transition zone from single-family to non-residential. That's about the right time for my battery to die. That's about the right time for my battery to die. Habitat Site Plan with a density of 25.3 units per acre far exceeds the existing planned density of the surrounding properties. I say the planned densities because my understanding is that the planning commission is supposed to look at the use of property, not just the current zoning of property. Even though it's RM1, it has a broad range of densities that are available in RM1. And so I'm saying that they really needed to look at how is the property being used. When you look at Trailside, their densities right now average 8.7 units per acre in their highest areas and 4.4 in the lower areas. 2018 master plan engaged a community in developing the master plan. They had active meetings with the community. Half the community wanted recreational, half wanted residential. It was split 50-50 according to the master plan. So right now, we're ignoring half of the community that participated in the master plan by going all, going with the RM1. The Habitat Site Plan with a density of 25.3 units per acre is not aligned with the city's 2018 master plan for density. The master plan had a residential option that had less than 14 units per acre. It was a better transition from the existing 5.7 in the surrounding areas. The 2018 housing study identified a need for market-rate housing for the missing middle and seniors. The master plan identifies a need for missing-middle housing. In fact, I think it's commented 16 times within the master plan that you need to have missing-middle housing. Yet, the Habitat Site Plan fails to adequately address the amount of need for that housing. It seems like the whole range, one of, the whole range seems to be targeting a much different demographic and population. So I think that we're missing the original task of missing middle for, and seniors. And the density of the proposed development significantly, so the bottom line is the density of the proposed development significantly exceeds the densities of surrounding properties and it does not comply with the densities that are called out in the master plan. That's my basis of it being spot zoning. And again, the graphic was to depict actually how it's being used. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for your comments. And I guess just to be clear, we're not going to, I guess, for the council's sake, tonight we're just talking about the rezoning, not into the densities and all the other, what would be really multiple steps to still get into with planning and whatnot. So just so we're clear. Any thought, there was a, I think one, maybe we'd get back on the issue of being adjacent versus across the road. I just, if you want, we can maybe get back to him on that question.
Yeah, Nick, if you can also help me out with this. We've, we've always used, my, my idea about spot zoning is if I were to put commercial B2 or, you know, B4, I, you know, high industrial, I'm sorry, high flow-through traffic like you would put a Wendy's through here, that's spot zoning to me. I guess when, when I look at what's adjacent to, we do look across the road because that is kind of how you do look across. If you do look at most every other zoning district, if you look down Broadway, you do see your commercial districts lining on both sides. As you go down, you have industrial, I'm sorry, commercial on your west side and on your east side. So that's a similar and that's, that's pretty common with every zoning I've ever seen. Nick, would you, would you concur?
That's correct. I mean, I guess technically the zone, the roads themselves aren't zoned, but they're always treated as being within the zone and this zone is contiguous because immediately south, I mean, with this rezoning, it would, it would still be contiguous because immediately south of this parcel is an RM1 parcel. In terms of the suggestion that the notice wasn't accurate because it said it's adjacent to RM1, again, I don't, I don't think that's, that's accurate. Again, it's immediately across the street and I think most people understand adjacent to, to qualify as adjacent.
Okay.
Right, it's to the south and to the west.
Okay.
So this is bordered on at least two sides of it.
Okay. That was the moment I noticed. So, very good. Let's go ahead. Actually, time's up for tonight. Yep. Let's go ahead. Next person want to make a public question or comment? Anybody else? Come on, state your name and address. Good evening.
Good evening. Dave Tuttle, 116 Clinton Street. I would like to speak to the issue of the zoning here and while we all are aware that there is a specific use plan as presented by the Habitat, I was listening in to some of the, the June meetings of the planning commission where this was discussed and the topic of the density was specifically brought up. And the planning commission at that point in time said, "We are not aware of a specific plan and we are not addressing the density. We are merely talking about whether this can be single-residential or multiple-residential." And I understand that there may be a category for multiple-residential, but to go forward and make this change without fully being bought into the concept that you're subsequently going to be trying to endorse this density. Let's be transparent and say, "We are going to have this density with 140 units on that property or no, we think there should be 60 units on this property." Let's be clear on that before you approve the change of this zoning ordinance, please. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Be the last time you have to see me today. But 879 Monroe Boulevard, Lisa Beck. I agree with the last gentleman. I think the density does have to do with the zoning and I agree with the gentleman that showed the plan also about the missing middle. We have talked about the missing middle and if you look at the numbers that Habitat has given, a fire, I mean, I'm sorry, a policeman with a family from one to four could not qualify to live in the existing ones. A teacher with one to two family, her, him or her and spouse could not qualify to live there. I don't think that's what we want. I think we want to have a area where the, the people that we were talking about in all the meetings all along, the missing middle is not missing. I also agree the density is just too high. I think that people don't want to live on top of each other. If we're going to make affordable housing, it should be nice. It should be affordable and it should be nice. It should have green space. It should have more than 1.07, I think it is, parking spaces for Phase One. We're breaking our own ordinance there. I mean, two parking spaces, almost anyone who is in the missing middle or lower income is going to have two cars if they're working. That's just the reality here. And so I think that we really need to, before we go to the zoning, really look at what it is we're trying to do in this community and who we're trying to serve because I think we're missing the boat.
Thank you again. Appreciate it.
My name is Deborah Mahone and I live at 910 Calamazoo Street here in South Haven. And I want to, the council to be more transparent to the people who live in that area for the multicultural fam, for the multi-family residents. The people who live there, those, most of those homes there in that area are single-family. Now, if you're trying to, as I was always thinking, that you were trying to bring homes for the missing middle. Because a lot of our young people who have graduated from Elsie Moore High School, South Haven High School, I graduated in 75, they have left South Haven because there is no, no, the jobs, well-paying jobs are not here. They're mostly hospitality. If they want to afford a home, they'll have to work three or four hospitality jobs to be able to buy, purchase a home or even stay in an apartment where the rates are now. And I think that when you're looking at that, make sure that you are honestly seeking to the residents their concerns, just like when the property was torn down where National Motors and Everett's were there. The, when they were doing, removing the soil, we don't know if asbestos was there or not. And you, and that's poisoning us. How do we know what is in the ground there now when you get ready to do those homes there or if single-family homes are there? Remember us who live there, all around in that area. We do need middle-class people, working people, the working poor, we need homes to live in. And if it's a single-family home, people are more, more cautious, I mean, would do better with a single-family home because that's something that they own. They'll take care of their own. But when you have multicultural, we don't know if you're going to put an apartment complex, how many people are going to be there, whether there's going to be enough parking. What is that going to do to our community? And so when you're doing that, just be transparent to the people. Be truthful to the people, what you're really seeking to do. Don't just put something up and then we say, "Oh, that's there." But be honest with us. I appreciate if you do.
Thank you. Pastor Joe.
Sheriff Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I just came up just to make a few comments. One, this process has been going on, I know, at least three years.
Can you talk up just a little louder, Joe?
Yes, sir, for you, Mr. Reeser. I'll take the mask off. No, it has been going on for three years. I've heard a lot of things that's not accurate. I think city management, the council have been very transparent when it came, when it comes to this project. And so, you know, I was a part of original meetings when the community decided what should be done with Overton property. Well, it wasn't really 50-50 because when we did those exercises, if, if he's actually referring to the ones that I was at, there was, the instruction wasn't really clear and people were putting ones and twos and threes and they were actually repeating and putting more than one sticker in place. So it's hard to determine 50-50. But what we do know is that we need affordable housing. We do know that. And so I don't think this meeting, if I'm, help me Kate, if I'm wrong, I don't think the agenda calls for talking about density. And somehow we've spun this whole argument back down to people pulling it out of the same playbook about density. And so, the fact is that we need affordable housing. A young lady came a couple of meetings ago and said, "Listen, I'm that person that had to move away to Calamazoo." And when she came back, because she worked in COVID, when she came back, she found out that she didn't make enough to live in some of the nicer places and made too much to live in Coastal Crossings and stuff. So she was caught in the middle. I think this project will address a lot of that. And so, that's my concern. That's what I rose to say because granted, I grew up in this area with, when we had nothing but factories in Ward One, south side of Ward One, nothing but factories. A lot of traffic, families, I mean, actually, schools were booming. My graduation class, I think, was 200 and almost 300. And they, they're barely getting that now, close to that. I don't even think they're close to that now. It was really nice to have, we were talking to some of my friends, how in the neighborhood you would hear kids playing and stuff like that. You don't hear that anymore because if you want to talk about density, short-term rental has really killed that. You don't have families now and you look down your block now, where's the families? After the summer's over, even, where's the families? You may have houses full during the summer, but right now, you look down your block, nobody. So, yeah, we are doing exactly what the master plan said. We're hitting the missing middle. We're making affordable homes for those that quite, maybe can't make that, that number or can't afford, you know, that large amount of rent. If you go downtown, the rent is like 1,600, 1,800. That's understandable. But Overton is a great location to be able to offer that opportunity for youth to come back into this neighborhood, that want to live in this neighborhood and experience what we experienced as living as a resident in South Haven. My son graduated, he's up in Lansing. He would love to come back someday, but the way we're going, I doubt that's going to be possible. So Overton Project opens up that opportunity for those that would love to come back to South Haven to enjoy what we are allowed to enjoy as residents right now.
Thank you, Joe.
Hello. Kate Engelbrecht, 125 Elkenberg Street. I would like to support Mr. Tuttle's comment and Ms. Mahone's comment. Approving the zoning to the RM1 multifamily residential may be the appropriate thing to do, to put in affordable housing in the Elken, or in the Overton property. But I agree with Mr. Tuttle that for the transparency purposes, when you do that, it would be very helpful for all the citizens to know that we're doing that and yes, the targeted number of units we want there is 80 or 100, not necessarily the 144 that Habitat wants to put in there. You want to put in the number of units that South Haven needs to support the residents here and the employees that we have working in South Haven, the missing middle, not the number of units that Habitat needs to make a profit. We need to do what South Haven needs and what the studies have shown and what our employees and our employers and what the gentleman before me was here talking about, the, the people who have had to move away because there weren't homes or apartments here for them to rent so that we can supply those. But not necessarily to the extent that Habitat wants. Do we need 114 rental units when, as Ms. Mahone said, people want to buy units? They want affordable homes to buy, not the short-term rental 400,000, 500,000 homes that are just for rich people from somewhere else that want to come in and pay a fortune a week to vacation here, which we need and we've got plenty of those. But we need affordable housing for year-round working people in our community to be able to live here year-round. And we don't need just the 26 units that Habitat wants to build. We need more than that. We need, say, 40 units that people can buy and live here and establish themselves here. And we don't need all the rental units built first. And maybe if Habitat thinks they've made enough money, then maybe they'll throw in a few homes to purchase. Or if people get upset because there's not enough parking, maybe they'll sacrifice the homes to purchase for more parking spaces. That's not what South Haven needs. That may be what Habitat wants to do. But I'm hoping the city commission will focus on what South Haven needs. And if and when you do rezone it to multifamily, you'll add as a sidebar in the paper or wherever you need to put it so that people know what your thoughts and your wishes are. You're hoping that the maximum number of units will be 80 or will be, thank you, or 100 with 60% rental and 40% ownership. And that's what your target will be and what you'll be working towards. And if Habitat can't do it, you'll find someone else that will. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
Mike Bouvet at 522 Superior. I am a new teacher at South Haven High School and I was living in Portage in a multifamily apartment complex before moving here and my wife and I were really concerned that we wouldn't be able to find space. So, we've only been here since the start of July and I've been trying to follow the progress of the talks around this Overton project really carefully because we were very fortunate to find someplace to- to find someplace to rent in early July where I didn't have to wait for a seasonal rental and move in after Labor Day, which a couple other teachers in the high school are currently doing. So this Overton site for me speaks to a promise of other teachers, other city workers not having to be anxious if they're going to have to make an hour-long commute. Some are still doing that or wait for a seasonal rental. I'm really looking forward to this and I do have a question. After the multifamily use is approved, zoning is approved, I'm assuming that there will be another meeting where we have public comment around what those plans look like. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a whole variety of steps that will still need to occur. I mean, first, we need to approve the use and then from there, that will be over.
So that's the point that we can discuss how dense the development will be and so on and so forth. Okay. Thank you.
You got it. And welcome. Glad you're teaching. Anybody else?
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. Again, due to the limited time, I will be providing some written comments. I first am not against affordable homes and I fully agree with many comments, even those of Pastor Wilkins, and I'll get into that later. But I am against using the RM1 zone because per our own ordinance, it's supposed to be transition. It's transition between non-residential districts and lower-density, single-family districts. It's all residential. We do not need a transition zone at that location. We need residential. And RM1 allows too much opportunity for lack of control on what will be there. And the full agenda packet for tonight shows that there's a full intent to put 144 units there. I don't believe we are at a point where our voices will be heard in light of the proposed agreement in the next agenda item. This area is residential and low-density as already discussed. The master plan lays out Overton as residential and low-density. The housing market analysis similarly represents that type of housing. The planning commission and the city council have failed to do their diligence, have cut corners to push this complete to meet the developer's timeline. There is another round for the applicant in April 2022. Let's get our ducks in a row and not let the developer control this. We have failed to provide data except for self-serving assertions that 144 families' units are needed there. The facts don't support that. And when you look at everything that's now out in the public domain from the publication of the agenda at 5:15 on a three-day weekend, which I think is just disrespectful of our time, it shows that this is de facto spot zoning. And with regard to income, I'm very appreciative of the fact that Reverend Wilkins noted that people in coastal crossings had to live elsewhere because they made too much. My understanding is that the project from the Habitat Company has the exact same scoring. And people who could not live in coastal crossings should not be able to live here, from my understanding. And in fact, what's worse is I presented to you on Monday, August 30th, after your closed session, after which two of you exited, and so you did not benefit from my comments, that some diligence that I did on my own showed that a police officer with actually one to five family members would not qualify because they make too much. The example from Habitat horribly understated the income. In South Haven, based on the public opening for an officer right now, he or she would make 58% more than Habitat recommended. A teacher, a level-one entry teacher with one to two people in her family or his family would not qualify. They would make too much. An EMT or SHAES first responder, Habitat represented an EMT or a firefighter. Our SHAES responders are dual-trained. We are blessed to have such wonderful first responders in our community. What have we done? We have forced them to live elsewhere because they would not qualify, many of them, for the units. And I will get into that with regard to the very vague and imprecise agreement that's on the next agenda item because failure to define terms and clearly show and delineate what units will be allowed and pursued and who would qualify for them and using factors that just happenstance hit the income level of the percent area median income to make the point is just too coincidental. I don't think the facts have been transparent. I think the facts have been at a benefit of Habitat and the city council needs to do their diligence, as does the planning commission, and make sure this is the right project for this property and that the density is right for our community.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? All's quiet. All right. Counsel. Comments?
Do we close the public hearing? Are we in a public hearing? It's a long, yeah?
Nope.
Okay.
We are now.
No, this is just the introduction.
Yep, just an introduction time. Counsel, questions, comments?
Comments?
Yeah.
Let's start at the beginning, first meeting, three and a half.
Sorry. Let's go back three and a half years ago to the first meeting. And we had 200 to 300 people from the community come and give their opinion on what we want to do with Overton. A year later, we had another meeting. We've had meeting after meeting. 13 residents and people from city council and planning sat on a board that was randomly chose from the community, including several people from the southern part of Ward 1. So it represented the people in the community. They all chose Habitat. Habitat gave them a plan. They chose that plan. Now, I'm not saying I agree with everything. Some of the people who said we'd like to have more houses and less apartments, that was my going-in position very, very strongly because I think it's better for the community to own a home and develop equity than it is to rent. And I can give you statistic after statistic about the black community, how they are under-represented in homeownership. Now, there's more than one reason, as Gail has explained to me, but still, ownership seemed like the way to develop equity. And yet, the community said, a lot of people can't afford a 200, the $250,000 home. We need apartments. The mayor has said repeatedly that employers have come to him, and we have it in writing from them, that we need apartments for our employees to live in. And all you have to do is go downtown and look at the signs. One-bedroom start at $1,200. So we're trying to listen to the community. Habitat has switched gears several times. They have come out and talked to the community. They started with 160 homes. They're down to 140 units, 144, I think, to be exact. And when it comes to density, the fact of it is, they are at 25 per acre. I think someone said 25.3. You're probably right. Compare apples with apples, please. We're not talking about suburbia. We are talking about affordable housing. The average, per Ryan Kilpatrick, our paid consultant, said the average affordable housing area is 30 to 40 homes per acre. So Habitat is below that. So they are trying to do what the community wanted. They asked for more green space. They increased the green space at one of the recent meetings. As far as control, that community will be a PUD. We will control that so we won't have seasonal housing, we won't have short-term rentals. This will be a controlled community with year-round residents. So it's not perfect, but we sure have tried to listen and tried to hear what the community wants. And the community has varying of opinions, various opinions. And I think Habitat has come out to the community many times and listened. And it'll be good, the next city council calls will have Ryan Kilpatrick, who will give you more facts showing that Habitat has done what is asked of affordable housing. This is not a single home with a white picket fence around it. This is for the gentleman who needs, who's a teacher, who needs a home to live in. And when someone says, I don't understand people living so close together, just so you know, I lived on a street growing up with 20 houses on one side, a little narrow street and 20 on the other. That's 40 homes on one block and we lived beautifully and it never hurt any of us. And that was what I called middle-class. My wife calls it working-class. Whatever it is, it fit a need then. And two miles away were the big stone, single homes. It is a different need that we have in this community now. Our population has gone from 6,300 to 4,300 in about 10, 15 years. And now there's a census saying we're down to 3,900. We've got to do something to attract businesses and give people a place to live that's affordable. If not, we're going to continue to decrease. And as we decrease the numbers, our schools will be in trouble, our businesses will be in trouble, and then our employers will be in trouble. So we, the only message I want to leave you is we are trying. You may not believe it. We are listening and we are trying. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, I'll just throw out a few things. So as we know, housing is an issue. It's not just here. It's national and state. You're seeing a variety of initiatives going on recently in the state. I know the Michigan Municipal League is spearheading some legislative action. Michigan is developing a five-year statewide housing plan for the first time to ensure access to safe, affordable, quality housing. We mentioned, yeah, this is for several years. I mean, I was at the charrette where we talked about, is it recreation? Is it housing? Recreation critically important and being addressed a block away at the schools. We're about, we as a community have voted to invest a lot of money to rejuvenate our fields over, right adjacent over at the high school. So you're seeing that investment. As a community, we've decided we want to see that invested right at the schools, which is fantastic. So I just, I think the important thing to remember is that as we talk about housing, we talk about economic development, we talk about job creation, it all ties closely together. And this is one project. It's not the end. I can't say that enough. I mean, the question is which numbers have we settled in on? We know that Habitat, there's a target number that they're trying to get to for purpose of, you know, scoring to get money, to get grant money, whatnot. So that's, you know, we'll get into that. But I think at the end of the day, we know this isn't the end project. I would love to have enough to make sure I got enough for, you know, everybody, but this isn't going to be it for everybody, not the first phase. We need more options. The for-sale piece is the most difficult piece. We're getting some more information on that. The for-rent piece is a little easier to understand. That's kind of where we kick it off. So we're talking to the township. We're talking to the schools. There are other, you know, projects, you know, other sites that we will be discussing, but this is just one. And I know I've been here 20-some years. This site's gone from a dilapidated, you know, factory to now blank dirt. And should something happen here eventually? I mean, it should. I mean, and I talk about, you know, how did I get here? When I moved to town, there was a little place called Lake Crest Apartments over on the north side. They're three-story buildings, which I think we're talking about here. They're, I think they're 80-some units on a couple acres, which is, I think, less dense than this is being proposed. But I mean, and I was able to move to town, start in town and stay in town because I started here. And a lot of people don't have that option anymore. I work in an apartment of 20-some people and I'm the only one that lives here. All my coworkers drive from out of town. And that story is, we hear that story everywhere we go. I don't care if I'm talking to a line cook at a restaurant or if we're at Alva Marl talking to one of the production workers, if we're at Viber Acoustic, it's the same story. Our people can't start here in town. There's just nothing available. So at some point in time, and we've talked about it for years, we have to, you know, start working on something to try to get some housing options here in town. So in that regard, the site was identified. This first step is to get it rezoned. So I guess I will vote in favor of that as a result. So no other comments? If so, we have a motion to consider the introduction of the proposed rezoning of 229 Elkenberg Street. Why don't we just roll call it to make sure it's clear?
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. It's about 8:30. Why don't we get a five-minute recess before we go on to item 12? I make a motion, we have to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Motion second, take a five-minute recess. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, we're on, see you in five. We are going to get back here so we can try to get home. So how about a motion to go back into open session?
Make a motion reopen? Reopen?
Second.
Motion second to go back into open session. All those in favor say aye. Aye. No, it's back open. And then Ms. Wilkins had to leave. She had a recent back surgery and she was not feeling good, so I can get a motion to excuse her. She left at 8:13.
I make a motion to excuse Letitia Wilkins at 8:13.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion and a second to excuse Ms. Wilkins at 8:13. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, she's excused and hope she feels better and walks a little bit. It's no fun, your back hurts to be sitting in a chair. So let's roll onward. Next, city council will be asked to receive and discuss proposed purchase and development agreement with the Habitat Company regarding the Overton Site at 229 Elkenberg. So at this point in time, this is just a discussion item. We don't need to do anything else. So Nick's going to run us, start us on this one. Kate?
Yes, so the city attorney has put together a brief slideshow, kind of going over the highlights of the purchase and development agreement that we have drafted here. And I guess I'll turn this over to Nick at this point.
Sure. So there's in your packet a essentially complete draft of a purchase agreement with Habitat. And this PowerPoint will kind of walk through the logistics of what the transfer process would look like, as well as the conditions for each individual phase. And then if you have questions about what some of these AMI levels and things like that and the agreement mean, we can have a discussion with staff who has the information with the tables on Van Buren County income and things like that. So moving to the next slide, just a brief history, as council is aware, we're talking about a vacant undeveloped parcel at 229 Elkenberg, former manufacturing parcel operated by the Overton Company for many years. It's the parcel we just discussed in terms of the rezoning. That was before council on the last item. In June 2020, the city posted an RFP seeking interested developers. After a vetting process through a, through a committee, it was determined that the developer with, that this proposed agreement is for Habitat Company out of Illinois was the best fit for the city's goals. And since that time, we've been working with Habitat to get to this point where we have a proposed agreement for the council to review. So Habitat is proposing a three-phase development. This is their conceptual plans that were, that were presented to council some time ago and they're, these are incorporated as an exhibit to the agreement. These phases were, were formerly numbered, phase one, two, and three, kind of working up the, up the picture there. They're now relabeled for purposes of this agreement as rental phase one, for-sale phase, and then rental phase two. And the reason for that primarily is to not confuse people as the sequential order that the agreement is, is calling for. The phases would be constructed and, and sold as shown there, with rental phase one occurring first, for-sale phase occurring second, and then rental phase two occurring last. And there's kind of conditions in the agreement that would ensure that that, that it would happen in that order as opposed to some other order. Again, the agreement calls for phased purchasing, so the city will retain title to portions of the site while Habitat develops other portions. Before any closings occur, there's kind of a global due diligence period where Habitat is basically what all they have left to do is seek a number of governmental approvals, including the, the city PUD approval, which was discussed in conjunction with the last item. They also need to secure housing tax credits through Mishda for their phase one, for their rental phase one. So that, that would be the primary things going on over the next few months. And then if they were, for some reason, unsuccessful on their first two applications to Mishda, as was previously referenced, there's an application they'll be submitting in October, another application they'll be submitting in April if they're unsuccessful on the first one. If they're unsuccessful on both of those, then the due diligence period could be extended for another year to allow for two more applications and it would kind of push these deadlines out. Go back, Griffin, there's a couple more things. In terms of purchase price, we have a total purchase price of $100,000. It's designed to reimburse the city for its acquisition costs from 2015. Other costs that the city has incurred, including the demolition cost from bringing down the former factory site, would be reimbursed through a brownfield plan, which we'll discuss a little bit later on. But the purchase price would be phased, consistent with the three phases, with the, the two rental phases being at $40,000 and the for-sale phase being at $20,000. And that's kind of in recognition of the fact that there's more subsidies available for the rental portion than with the for-sale portion. And in order to hit the price points, the council is hoping for, for, to keep those for-sale units affordable, that lower land value is an effort to, toward that. In terms of timing, as I alluded to earlier, the closing is supposed to occur before April 30, 2022, so that's next spring. And that's assuming that the, that Habitat would be successful on one of its first two Mishda applications. And I believe I misspoke earlier, the second Mishda application would be submitted in February, awarded in, in early April. So that's where those, those deadlines came from. The for-sale phase, the deadline provided in the agreement is that closing must occur by December 31, 2025. So that gives a few-year period for them to do essentially due diligence on the, on the second phase. They could, they could do that much faster. That's just kind of an, and that's the outer date by which they have to do it under the agreement. And then finally, the rental phase two is tied to construction on the for-sale phase. So Habitat would not have the ability, under the agreement, to acquire that property, the last, the last parcel, until it has commenced construction on the for-sale phase. And again, that's to address a concern I believe was raised in public comment, that they, they might construct the rental phases and walk away for the, from the for-sale phase. That can't happen under the way this is structured. It's a condition of that final phase that they construct the for-sale phase. And then, and then the overall project needs to be done by the end of 2029. Is that right? Yes. End of 2029, yes.
If after the for-sale phase, before phase two of the rental, if the city felt that the for-sale went so well, and let's just say the phase one rental didn't go that great, it was hard to fill them, could we as a city then say, we want phase two to be a second phase of for-sale homes? Do we have that option?
As this is currently written, that would require renegotiation of the agreement. So it's, this contemplates the proposal being developed as kind of a unified whole as Habitat has presented it. So if you were to get to that point, you could certainly go back to Habitat and try to negotiate that or come to terms for that. But as written, there's, you know, the ability to take down the phases and do the project as it's currently proposed. So I guess the short answer is, is no, other than the renegotiation option.
Okay.
That's something we have not asked Habitat about. We, I mean, we potentially, we could ask them that. My guess is that they, they, well, I, I don't know. If you would like us to.
Well, Nick, I thought, Steve, and correct me, Steve, I thought you kind of asked that question long, long time ago. If we looked at this project, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if it didn't go to its full fruition, if we didn't have it all done, and that's the way we wanted to stop it, could you live with that? Am I getting that, am I kind of right on that?
Yeah, I've asked them a couple times what, you know, to, about density and things of that nature, if, 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 if they could live with, with, with less. And they said we could, but they liked their proposal the way it was. So I like the idea of leaving our options open.
Joe, to your question, I have concerns about parking. And I asked, I said, when, if we get one and two done, could we adjust, monitor and just add more parking? And Jeff had said, yeah, we could do that. So that's what he said here, but I wasn't privy to the negotiations.
Because, Nick, and I think a lot of people in here have, in one way or another, brought this up. As much as I believe we need apartments, I don't know 100% if we need more for-sale homes and less apartments. And I like the idea of being phased, because if those apartments filled up within six months, every apartment, and people are in line to get more, then let's proceed that way. But if they had a hard time filling them and people who wanted to buy the homes had the home, money for the homes, and you will discuss later, the financing for the homes, it would seem reasonable to ask Habitat or the city to push for more homes. It just would be really advantageous for the community to have that flexibility. But I know a contract is a contract, but we don't really know for certain, sitting here, if we can fill up all the apartments and fill up all the for-sale homes. It may turn out the apartments go like crazy and we can't sell hardly any of the homes and we could build a whole lot more apartments and less homes. We don't know any of that. So that's the only reason I thought about the flexibility when it's phases, but apparently it wouldn't work for them.
That's a fair point. I mean, we, we can raise it and see how, how they respond. We're happy to do that. We're planning to take any comments from this council meeting back to them because we do have another, this is an introduction item just for discussion. We do have another two weeks before council will be asked to vote on anything. So, so we can ask that question. Yeah, I mean, I, I think a difficulty, well, to your point about if one sells and the other doesn't, that's going to create a financial incentive to Habitat to come back to the table and negotiate. But we can certainly get to some thought about whether we can build flexibility into the agreement itself. It's not immediately apparent to me how we could do that, but we can give some thought to that over the next two weeks and maybe come up with an alternative.
Yeah, I, I think it's important because we've, we've, we've all asked the questions about the density and, you know, I think so have us, we said, we want to see, you know, I want to, we want to make sure we see the townhomes built, sooner or later, or whatever it might be. So I think to have that flexibility is important.
Okay.
So.
I think so too.
I think you're going to pretty much get us across the board, you know, flexibility on our part. How's that sound?
Mm-hmm. That makes sense.
Habitat, they'll learn to live with it because it's whatever the citizens in the city feels needs to happen, so.
Environmental remediations is a point that's, that's come up several times in this meeting and others. The, this property is a facility. It has a current brownfield plan that it's operating under. The demolition was done pursuant to a brownfield plan. The agreement provides, and state law frankly also provide, that before anyone can move in here, before certificates of occupancy can be issued, they, they would need to bring the site up to Eagles, what's called residential development standards. And that, that will be an Eagle process, not so much a city process, but it is a requirement of, of the agreement as well, that that remediation work be done. And they're anticipating doing it in phases, you know, basically part of the construction process. I think before they start vertical construction, they'd be doing that, those remediation activities. And, and that's part of, kind of the timeline that's, that they've proposed is taking into account that there's environmental work that needs to be done on each of the three parcels. So they, they would also be presenting an amendment to the brownfield plan that's anticipated to be submitted in the next couple of months and reviewed by the brownfield authority and the city council prior to, to the sale of the property. And that being the sale of the phase one parcel. And then, so because these parcels will be tax exempt, the two rental phases, the TIF that the brownfield plan will be funded with would be coming from the for-sale phase. And that's again, why it's important to have that for-sale phase built at a relatively early stage in the development, why we've built in the deadlines that we have. So that's all accounted for in the agreement. And then the TIF den rate from that parcel can be applied to activities occurring on the other parcels because of the brownfield is currently situated to, to cover all three. Well, it's currently only one parcel, but it covers the entire property and will continue to cover the entire property. In terms of the rental phase one development conditions, constructed in accordance with the PUD. And again, we've heard density referred to several times tonight. Density will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and then the city council as well as part of that PUD approval process. If it's determined that, that the density needs to be lower to accommodate parking or other concerns, then that's obviously something that the city is reserving the right to do in the, in this agreement. And then to the extent that affects housing counts and things like that, that would have to be worked out with Habitat, possibly through, through an amendment, depending on how substantial the impact is. So once Habitat submits its Mishda application, it's kind of locked into the unit mix it, it provides, but Mishda does allow flexibility up to 10%. So they, they could theoretically make some modifications to their, to their dwelling tables, to their unit tables to account for something that were to occur in Planning Commission review or in their other governmental reviews, because they have a review by Mishda as well that could, that could potentially affect unit counts and things like that. So it's, it's sort of fluid from this point on, given the government approvals, but what they're proposing and what's in the agreement is what they're planning to put in their Mishda application as, as, you know, the rental mixes that they would be offering here. And we'll go over specifically what those are as we get to later slides. We've also are proposing a repurchase option for the city. So the affordable housing in the rental phases through Mishda would have to last for a, a, a minimum of 30 years after construction of those units. Mishda often requires, as part of their approval, that that be extended to 50 years. Habitat's anticipating that will be the case for this property and has indicated to Mishda that they are okay with that and would accept that condition. What this provision would, would contemplate is that after that required period, whatever it ends up being through their Mishda, through their Mishda application, whether that be 30 years or 50 years, the city would have the option at the end of that term to repurchase this property before it was converted to market rate housing. And we're still working with their council on the exact wording of that provision. They have to make sure their lenders are comfortable with whatever is in here, but they have agreed to the, to the concept overall and that, that deed restriction will be included in Exhibit D next time this count, this, in your next packet. Exhibit D is currently blank in this agreement, but we've described in, in general terms that the city's going to have a repurchase option that will be inserted into that Exhibit Here are some tables showing the rental mix and, and income levels for phase one. So the table at the top shows units broken down into AMI levels, and AMI is area median income. And so they're proposing 17 units at below 40% AMI, 36 units at between 40 and 60, five units at what they call a market rate, but is essentially 60 to 100% AMI, and then for a total of 58 units. And this is in rental phase one only. And then the second shows that broken And then the second shows that broken down into bedrooms in each of the two categories that are regulated by MISTDA, and those are the zero to 40 and the 40 to 60. Just for reference, we have on this slide that 60% AMI in Van Buren County currently equals 33,180 for a single person, 372,920 for a two-person household, and then 42,660 for a three-person household. So that shows the range occupied for those 40 to 60 units. You do see that there are five units in rental phase one, and then also for rental phase two, kind of skipping ahead, that would be offered to individuals at higher incomes than that. And then all of the units in the for-sale phase, which is 26 units, would be targeted at an income range higher than that. Those would be, half of those units would be targeted at 100 AMI, and then another half would be targeted at 120% AMI. So the overall goal is to hit quite a range of income levels in this overall development. So while it's true that certain types of jobs might not be able to live in certain units, there is kind of the broad range of what's referred to as the missing middle and workforce housing offered within this development overall. And we'll get into more details on that as we go to future slides. So here are those rental rates again, so, sorry, the AMI rates for Van Buren County broken down for one-person household, two-person households, three-person households, and four-person households. Oh, that's monthly salary, isn't it? Didn't, don't have the yearly salaries there, but those are the, oh, those, sorry, I apologize. These are the rental rates. So the rental rates that individuals will be paying is tied to their AMI, and this is how they would look for phase one. Other notes on income, on the income levels, Habitat is seeking what's called a housing choice voucher for tenants in that below 40% AMI range. These vouchers are provided through housing providers and provided through the state, and they're based on availability. Our understanding and talking to Ryan Kilpatrick, the city's housing consultant, is that any available vouchers will likely be reserved under federal law for individuals who are elderly or individuals with disability. So that explains what those 40% units are likely to look like. And some other notes about the offering of those units is that they make MISTDA's application, they make Habitat's MISTDA application more competitive. His council knows there's a competitive scoring system for the allocation of the tax credits through MISTDA. And having a certain percentage of units in those levels is a significant increase in score and makes it significantly more likely that they will be successful in the applications they'll be submitting in October. And the other benefit of those units is that it also allows Habitat to offer units above 60 AMI. All the units in phase one have to average 60 AMI. So if they're all at exactly 60 AMI, nothing can be offered above. By offering some below that, they're able to offer some above that as well. So that's part of the reasoning with those spreads. For the for-sale phase, as previously mentioned, construction must start on for-sale phase before the rental phase two can start, before that parcel can be sold. Half of the proposed units will be offered at below 100% AMI. The other half will be offered at below 120% AMI. And the units would be restricted from being resold for more than $250,000, adjusted for inflation with the formula that's in the agreement. And that would be for a period of at least 20 years. And with all, sorry, 25 years. And with all the phases, short-term rentals would be prohibited, and that would be by deed restriction for this particular phase. There is a possibility of a third-party developer for this phase. So the agreement that's going to be coming before council and that is in your packet tonight is specifically with Habitat. But the city staff and Habitat both acknowledge that there may be some benefit to looking at other third-party developers or junior developers, or sometimes referred to, for the for-sale phase. And we have provisions built in here about what that potential future partnership could look like and how it would take shape. We'd be anticipating that before phase one was even closed, the city would enter into a assignment agreement with a third-party, assigning Habitat's responsibilities and benefits under that portion to another developer that would step in to the role with this, respect to this phase. There may be, potentially be some benefit to doing that, and we can obviously discuss this later on, but there are entities, including an entity that staff is currently talking to, that have certain structures involving land trusts and kind of a different structure than Overton has that may provide some good options for this for-sale phase. But as of now, the agreement is with Habitat, and Habitat would be committing to everything I just said in terms of the deed restriction and the price levels and things like that. For rental phase two, it would look very similar to rental phase one in terms of the conditions that addressed on a previous slide. The tables are slightly different, although fairly similar. And again, we're talking about a two-building setup for phase two as opposed to the one building setup for phase one. Construction here would have to start between, before 2030, and if not, there'd be, kind of penalties built in to the agreement if Habitat doesn't meet that overall project deadline. You can see the AMI tables here. Again, we have most of the units offered in that 40 to 60 income range, some of the units reserved for the below 40, and those would likely be the housing choice vouchers if Habitat's successful in securing those. And then 5%, sorry, five units in the 60 to 100% AMI range, kind of hitting those higher incomes that were referred to earlier. In terms of remedies, we have relatively complex remedy provisions that's just consistent with the complexity of the various transactions taking place over a fairly significant period of time. As a general matter, and this is, the actual agreement's more specific than this, but the city's remedies for a breach prior to closing on phase one would be to terminate the agreement and retain the earnest money. Habitat would be able to terminate without penalty if certain approvals aren't obtained during the due diligence period. But then after the due diligence period, after closing on phase one, city's remedies would be basically suing for damages or for the specific, sorry, for the $50,000 liquidated damages I referred to earlier that are, would be reduced down to $25,000 once they completed the phase one and rental phase two. I know that's a lot of information. There's even more information in the agreement itself, but I do think I hit kind of the key features there. If council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And if council has questions about the AMI levels and what those mean in terms of salaries of city workers and things like that, I'm probably going to defer to Griffin on those, but you're welcome to ask those as well.
I had, just a couple of clarifying questions, and Griffin can help. When talking with Ryan about, obviously you worked the contract, but Ryan was our, is our expert about how all that stuff works, Ryan Kilpatrick that is. We talked about that zero to 40% range, and I know Letitia Wilkins expressed some concern. She said, well, you know, we don't want seedy people. And I don't, I don't know what term she used, but she expressed concern about that. And Ryan explained, he said, well, what we're shooting for is what he called an 811 voucher. And he said that would be for older people, and that'd be people with disabilities, and that would be for veterans. That's what they, that's what we envisioned for that zero to 40%. Is that correct?
That's correct. He said there are various types of housing choice vouchers that are theoretically available, but those are the ones that in practice are the only ones that are actually available right now. And it would be highly likely that it would be individuals that qualify for those when, you've correctly stated, they'd be people with disabilities who work but can't work full-time, or elderly people who are getting their, their income probably strictly from their social security or Medicare, Medicaid.
And then it seems like, and we had that zero to 40, the 40 to 60, 60. I think someone asked, you know, can we shift that around? And Ryan explained that, well, if you want to get the most federal help, you need to, because what you envision is getting a good cross-section of the country living here, a good cross-section of our nation. Welcome to this, to South Haven and to that. And so he said, no, you're better to leave it like this because that's what the federal government likes, is that, was I hearing that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And that's what I was trying to get at in explaining why they're offering the units at the 40% AMI. The MISTDA, it can't be understated how competitive that MISTDA application process is. A lot of applications are denied in each cycle. And as Ryan's explained, that's a very big boost in the score for this project is to say that they're going to be holding that many units at that 40% range. And again, it allows them to offer some units at the above range, and then obviously they've designed the whole for-sale phase to hit a higher income target. So you can't look at any individual unit as representative of the entire project. They really did try to kind of cover the whole ladder of the affordable housing market need.
Spectrum. And that reminded me, Ms. Hozley brings up many good points, but she said she was concerned about we're rushed, but there was something about MISTDA, the rules just changed. And so if we can get an application in, we have a better chance just this first time. But we certainly can hit the brakes and Habitat will be fine with that, and they'll apply later. But there was just something, Ryan said something about there is just a good shot if we could get that, that first try.
That's correct. So I don't remember how many years he said, but every few years, MISTDA totally revises its scoring system. And he said by the end of each cycle, Michigan developers who go through the process every cycle kind of figure out a way to kind of game the system or tailor the applications in a way to where they're likely to succeed. But when the cycle restarts, a new developer, basically every, it's an equal playing field. And he said that to the extent that we can have it ready for them to apply on this first round, it is advantageous to do so. As to the point about being rushed, we've been working on this deal and this agreement for a very, very long time. There's always last-minute details that need to be ironed out before we can publish the packet, but the general form of this has been conceived of quite a long time ago. So the rush is, there's always a rush at the end of a big deal like this, but it's the fine details and not the big picture.
Yeah. And my last, I don't want to monopolize all the time. Looping back to the for-sale houses, there was a clause about they can't, we sell it to somebody, and then they want to move and they want to resell it. There's a maximum on what they can sell it for, and it's based on inflation rate. But then what, the money has to go back, the money made has to go back into the house. It was, I've been.
So that's the community trust concept. Habitat is not a community trust.
Okay.
That's the third-party developer that we're, that we're talking to. And again, we're very hopeful that that concept is going to move forward, but that concept is not, that's not in this agreement.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, fleshed that out yet, okay.
That will be fleshed out and hopefully presented to council during the due diligence phase, kind of spun off of this agreement before we were to close on to phase one.
Something that, those, the homes aren't Habitat's strong suit, so that was why the clause was let in, that maybe a third-party person will come in to help.
Right.
Okay. That was, all right.
With that being said, I like the diversity of a person getting a raise and can still live in the same area, goes and steps to the next voucher, if you will. What I think is becoming more important to me is after the phase one, the city being able to put a stop to it if we're not happy or away out of it without it costing us attorney fees to get out of it. Follow me? In other words, like Mr. Reeser was saying earlier, if that phase, the building phase goes well, and boy, we all look at each other and say, yeah, we should, we should have more housing rather than apartments. Can you check with them and see if that's an option for us to be able to adjust and amend this deal? I don't know if that's possible with infrastructure needs and putting the infrastructure in first for a certain design and drawing or not, but I'd like to at least entertain that thought and see if we can get some feedback on that, maybe from staff. I don't know if it's possible with the infrastructure that you have to put in first.
Yeah, that is a difficulty is that that's, we're talking about the middle parcel being the last parcel. But that's a question we can ask, and we can put our heads together over the next two weeks and see if we can make at least some minor adjustments.
I just think we owe it to ourselves to be able to make sure this does end up what we all want it to be. And if there's a way to secure that, I think that's important to me.
I like Steve's idea, does it need a benchmark though? I mean, to say generally, if we like this idea, if we feel it, should there be a percentage? Maybe like we see a 60% fill rate or something over a certain amount of time? I don't know. I could see that being an issue without at least coming up with some kind of idea behind it, what we call good or bad.
Yeah, I think for me, again, it's the flexibility to be able to look at it as we're going, because I've said all along, I would like to see more in that higher 6, 80 to 120 range really. And I know we addressed that in the for-sale version, but I worry that there's just not enough. Again, if we could.
Well, if they have the flexibility to bring in a third-party, we should have the flexibility to pull out too. How about that for thought?
Any other council questions? Or just some public comments?
I did see, this kind of goes back to what Steve is talking about. So it looked like under the government approvals, where it talks about the zoning approval, it looked like the plan would be to submit a preliminary site plan for the entire property along with a detailed site plan for the rental phase one. And then that would probably get the approval. That kind of gets back to the infrastructure for the whole PUD. And then the details for the rental phase one would be included in the approval for the first thing, if I remember, if I understood that right.
That's correct. It'd be an overall PUD approved for the entire project within the next few months. That application will be coming into planning commission first and then the city council. And they'll probably simultaneously bring a final site plan for phase one only that will allow them to get building permits if that was approved. They would need to do the same thing for each subsequent phase, but that would be after the closing on phase one. And those final site plans have to be consistent with the concept, the overall approved plan, but there is some room to change things around to meet needs that were unforeseen at the time and things like that. So that is a way that it will be somewhat in flux going forward, and adjustments can be made. But as big of an adjustment as completely, you know, doing away with the rental concept and doing for-sale product instead, that would need to be a complete amendment to the original PUD plan in order to accomplish that, and as well as amendment to this agreement.
Which is not anything that could not be done if.
Right, right.
If we wanted to, yeah.
How would that affect the original application? They're not coming for a PUD unless they're successful, the application, correct?
They will be coming for the PUD simultaneously with their MISTDA, with their MISTDA application. I think the agreement requires them to submit their PUD by November 30, I believe, right? So they, that'll be going on simultaneously.
So it all gets authorized and the application was a success, the PUD was a success. What happens if the PUD gets, tries to get amended three years down the road? Does the state or MISTDA pull back on that original approval?
No.
If it's more than 10% change, like you stated earlier?
Oh, so they, yes, once they are approved through MISTDA, then they enter into an agreement with MISTDA that is recorded on the property, and it's just like a restrictive covenant. They can't do anything other than what's in that agreement unless they go back to MISTDA and get MISTDA's approval.
So they could get MISTDA approval per phase?
Yes.
With a need not be built on phase two or phase three?
I'm not sure I understand the question. The agreement they'll be entering into in the next year or so with MISTDA will only be for phase one.
Okay.
Yeah. And then they won't have an agreement with MISTDA for phase two because that's for-sale and MISTDA's not involved. They will go through the same process for phase three down the road.
Okay, so can, the PUD can be amended down the road?
Correct.
Without losing that phase one application that they're trying to get?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Who sets the terms for the PUD? Does the city, the city council, or does the developer?
They will bring an application proposing what they want, and then the planning commission will review it with the standards in the PUD ordinance and the other applicable ordinances. And then the planning commission can essentially require changes or place conditions on the approval if they're not, if there's a concern that they wouldn't be meeting those standards. And then that. And then that, Planning Commission makes a recommendation, that recommendation comes to City Council, who makes the final decision on that. Thanks.
Question. Take a few public comments.
We can, but has council any questions about the purchase price? I know that, I know that a hundred thousand dollars seems like it's a little low for, for this acreage, but I think that we've talked about this before, and Nick, can you talk about the deed restriction and, and how we acquired, how the city acquired the Overton site?
Yes, so, so this property was acquired through the county tax foreclosure process. At the time it was acquired, and for years and years before that, the statute required that these properties be deed restricted, so that if they're ever sold for above what the city paid, which is called the minimum bid in the tax foreclosure, which was eighty-eight thousand dollars roughly, when we bought it in 2015, then that money has to be paid back to the county and placed in the county's revolving tax fund. So that is what would have to occur, though, so there, there's an exception to that, exceptions about what you physically invest into the property, as you know, city through its BRA has physically invested in the demolition of that building, so that's a cost that could theoretically be recouped through the purchase price, but we couldn't go any higher than that. We couldn't go any higher than acquisition price plus purchase price. If we did go higher than that, then the city wouldn't recoup that money, it would be paid to the county revolving fund and kind of dispersed among the, you know, the, the broader, broader county. So that's one reason why this, this proposed purchase price is the way it is, and as I referenced earlier, this is set up so that those demolition costs, well, they wouldn't be recouped through the purchase itself, they would be recouped through a brownfield plan. Once taxes start being generated on that for-sale parcel, the brownfield will be made whole for those, those demolition costs. Again, the, the idea is to keep the, the land sale costs low, so that they don't have to pass along those, those costs to purchasers and renters in the property, keeps the overall rents and, and purchase prices of these units at an affordable rate.
Just a go. Very good.
All right, just another quick question. Nick, and it talks about in the project overview, it says Habitat agrees to purchase and develop the property substantially in conformance with the conceptual plans attached as Exhibit B. Substantially in conformance with the conceptual plans. It sounds kind of loose there. Is that intentional, or is that?
Yes, the reason for the looseness is, is the PUD process that we have referred to. The, the plans are subject to change through the PUD process, but only at the request of the city, essentially. Once the city goes through that process and places whatever conditions on, on the property, then later provisions of the agreement, as well as the zoning ordinance, require them to, to develop the property in complete conformance with that approval. So that's, that's just the wording I typically use when a property's got to go through an approval process, and we're only attaching conceptual plans as an exhibit as opposed to fully approved plans.
Public comments? Let's, any public questions or comments? Or just, it's just, come on up. Just state your name and address.
Twenty-six North Shore Drive, Mary Housley. I don't even know where to begin. First of all, I think that this is half-baked. You've said you've been working on it a long time, but this is the first we're hearing of it. We're told there's a lot to do, but there is a lot already done. The agreement indicates that there are potential violations of Land Division Act. It's not clear that those will be satisfied. It's not clear that the way the lines are drawn, that the PUDs can be satisfied with regard to parking. The different phases have significantly different, the lines are jig-jagged. I think to try and meet the Land Division Acts, but then it shoots you in the foot for the parking. We say we don't know exactly what we need, but we say we need all this. It really, I have to go back and say, it's time to put on the brakes. And what happens if our, if by chance, some miracle, we do get fewer units as we've been requesting, and that requires a change in the PUD, and that requires a change in MISTHA, and, and then it's not granted, so then is the city liable? Because the change resulted in the MISTHA not being granted, I didn't see that addressed in the remedy. I actually did notice the lack of the deed restrictions, but I didn't notice anything in there with regard to Phase Three and, or the, the for-sales, and I didn't see anything with regard to, with regard to ownership. And how does that, having, for Habitat, selling to a third-party, it just seems like we're circumventing our ordinance that requires an open bid process. And granted, Habitat was selected out of the Overton Evaluation Committee, however, I think it was stated more than once that several of the members, at least I know one member, really did not like any of the developers, and they elected to go with Habitat because they felt that they were big enough to handle it. But our master plan says that we really wanted homes, and tonight, it's clear that Habitat, their forte is not homes, it's apartments. So, and I don't think that was made clear during the Overton Evaluation, so I really wonder how well the diligence does what, in presenting the information to the Overton Evaluation Committee, and whether that decision was substantiated by relevant facts that were or not provided. And the diagrams on the AMI, I'm sorry, I think they're misleading. At the meeting on the thirtieth, I said the units need to be smaller. The total number in each unit, when you look at the distribution for the number of bedrooms, only went up to sixty percent. So even though there were a small portion in the sixty to one hundred, that range is too wide, you don't know what falls where, and the application indicates that it needs to be delineated for transparency, I think it needs to be delineated to us. And what, uh, let's see, um, and I just end, as I already alluded to, I think the agreement is vague and imprecise. You don't say what is the missing middle, you don't define that. I believe that it is eighty to one hundred and twenty percent, I've seen at that. Our, our documents indicate that it may be sixty to one hundred and twenty percent, because the low income is zero to sixty percent. I think you should not have overlap, so let's look at seventy percent to one-twenty percent for the missing middle. And workforce is also not defined. So with these undefined terms, it can be presented as one item, and we end up getting a completely different item, and it's not what we bargained for, there was not a meetings of the minds, and the agreement within the four corners of it are just, they have too many things that are not clear that put us in a position for litigation, and I think they're favorable to the, to Habitat with a little bit of time, Friday evening after five PM until now, for me to look at it. And I just, I think it's going too fast, and I think the city is setting itself up out of disrespect for the people and putting us in a bad way, and it sounds like they're looking at land trust. I don't understand why this wasn't done from the get-go. I raised it before, and Mayor Smith said, well, they didn't submit a proposal, they don't. We reach out to them with their expertise, because they help small communities and rural communities like ours turn brownfields into lovely developments.
That's your time, thank you. Given the fact this is just a, you know, discuss, propose, maybe you can kind of jot a few of those facts down, and we can make sure we address those before we come back.
Sure.
Perfect, thank you, and thanks for the comments.
Dorothy Lockwood, seven-four-seven Lee Street. There was talk of vouchers. I was wondering, is there a limit to the amount of vouchers they can apply for? Or how does that work? The vouchers meaning for the disabled veterans, the seniors, and the disabled? That was my question.
What's some of the numbers as proposed? I mean.
Those would fall within the below forty percent AMI. I, I think that they could potentially fill all those spots with, with housing choice vouchers if there are enough vouchers available, is my understanding. We can clarify that with Ryan Kilpatrick when he's at the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Dan Agnello, nine-sixty-four Everett Parkway. I keep hearing all these meetings, April meeting, June meeting, we can take care of that later, and it doesn't get taken care of. Habitat said in the April meeting that they could make money, get their MISTHA application approved and everything with sixty units. They have not changed that design one bit. They added eight or ten parking spaces between the April meeting and the June meeting. The concept is exactly the same as it was, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, one hundred and forty-four units. They could live with sixty units. They could put two, three-story, or three-two-story buildings, whatever it is, and make the rest have sixty units and have forty for-sale townhomes. They could do that, two phases, and everything would be fine. Habitat has not changed a thing. They haven't listened to anybody. Have you guys ever talked to Habitat about any of the things we talked about in the last three meetings? Density was brought up in the meeting in April, and so was parking. Has density changed? Have they made any alternate, alternate layouts? Not one. They had a few parking spaces, okay? Density and parking were the two items, and, and Habitat hasn't moved on it. Habitat is running this show, I hate to say this, but Habitat is running the show. They are rental people. They don't build houses, okay? They don't build townhomes, okay? Habitat is running the show. And we got to sit there and, and show people that we are going to design this thing the way it's supposed to be designed to meet the missing middle. And they, they haven't said any altern, alternatives. There hasn't been one alternative since, since the first part of the year when they had a hundred and fifty-some units. The only reason they made it a hundred and forty-four is because the people in the, in the lots said that's too many, that's right next to us, that's too many units, so it's, oh, we'll give you a token change, we'll make it down to a hundred and forty-four. And the parking is not even close. The layout is still the same as it was beginning of the year. They need three hundred and thirteen parking spaces for the entire build-out that they want right now. They have about a hundred and ninety parking spaces. It does not meet ordinance twenty. Everybody has to meet ordinance twenty in here, in the whole city, and in the area, other areas, but this developer can go to one, one-point-two, one-point-five. And I was going to bring up the question about the sale of the property, because those lots that were sold on Indiana were sold for more than forty thousand dollars apiece. But if, and if we, if we charge them the actual cost of the lots, the money's going to go to the county anyway, so then that explains why we had to sell them to them for that price. But I'm just telling you, Habitat's running the show. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. So, I mean, and just to be clear, we have been working with Habitat, we as a council, working with Ryan Kilpatrick, to come up with a design that ultimately can hopefully get funded. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I mean, this is about kind of working with people that are experts in this area to come up with a formula that can get this thing accomplished. It's not, again, it's a mix of housing types. You've heard us kind of having the discussions about how to get the higher ranges, the lower, how to get everything, how to get a cross-section of this community. I mean, a lot of these people are just, these are, you know, again, people, if you look at the breakdown, maybe at some point in time, well, let's make sure next time we put up those income levels, we understand, these are the, you know, a lot of these people that are working in this community, working with you, you know, serving you at restaurants, teaching your kids, so we can kind of understand where those breakdowns are. So, Joe, come on up.
Eight-eleven in the Anna Street. I just wanted to say that, to me, it was a great experience tonight to sit here and watch the council do their due diligence and ask the important questions of their attorney to make sure what they should be addressing. To me, I thought that was very refreshing. So I just rose to say that, because I heard a lot of good questions and feedback. I believe that, I know Mr. Reeser, Councilman Reeser, said something about the apartment, the number of apartment, the phases. I believe, it's my belief, you know, you build apartments, and I'm on the ground level out here, a lot of the needs, I think you're going to be surprised how, how quickly those apartments are filled. That's just my opinion. But having that option, the flexibility, that's all great. All those questions that was asked tonight, to me, were good to hear. So I want to say kudos to the council. They're doing a great job asking the right questions. Let us not forget, we, we, tonight, we had a perfect example from a fresh, a new teacher that moved into this area. We heard personal experience. Let's not forget his story, and that's what this is all about to me.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
Cam Doherty, five-two-two Edgell Street. I just want to say, I'm a hundred percent on board that we have a growing affordable housing need in South Haven, and I'm eager, too, to see families come back to the area. I also believe that the Overton site can and should play a role in meeting that need. My concern, though, is that either we haven't clearly stated what success looks like for this project as it relates to meeting that need, or we remain misaligned as a community on what success is. Maybe I've missed it, but I'd like to make sure we're all on the same page with what affordable means, as it's a relative term. Middle, however, is not a relative term, and that's what gives me pause when looking at this particular proposal. The proposed breakout of income requirements for this property, based on some very quick math this evening, appears to favor low-income housing with seventy-five percent dedicated to sixty percent or lower AMI. Additionally, if we're looking to bring back families to South Haven, this proposal doesn't meet this need with fifty-five percent of the proposal, or proposed units being one-bedroom units. Unfortunately, I think we have a little bit more work to do. I think we're moving in the right direction, but there's still more work to do. Thanks.
Thanks, Cam, appreciate it.
Kay Engelbrecht, one-twenty-five Elливord Street. Let's see. I was glad to hear Mr. Reeser's comments and Mr. Schlack's comments about the Phase Three of the project, as in if the apartments are not filling as quickly perhaps as what the townhomes are selling, if there's a possibility of changing Phase Three into perhaps more townhomes and less apartments or something like that, I think that's a very realistic request to make in the interests of South Haven versus totally the interests of Habitat. And just quick off the top of my head, I'm wondering if there can be something added to the buy, the purchase agreement that would be something perhaps like, based on occupancy, the city reserves the right to change Phase Three to a combination of for-sell, for-sale and rental units, and reduce the purchase price for Phase Three proportionately. That may be something that, that might be at least a starting point with Habitat, or at least put that in there as a possibility to be considered at the time. I'm concerned with the numbers that were put up on the board in the purchase agreement, and of course, they were up there so quick, so, such a short time, amount of time, it was hard to do any figuring. But I'm concerned that the teacher salaries, the firefighters, the EMS people, the police, the nurses, they may be at too high of an income level if they're married and their spouses work, for the number of units that are going to be, say, two-bedroom or three-bedroom units, for them to be able to get housing in those apartments. There are so many that are supposed to be one-bedroom units. I think that breakdown and percentage of one, one-bedroom versus two and three needs to be seriously looked at, so I'm hoping that that will be done. But anyway, I'm pleased with the questions that were asked, and I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to lie and say this would be the last time, sorry. One more time. At least effect eight-seventy-nine Monroe Boulevard. I also was really pleased to hear some of the questions and things that were raised, and it sounds like you're at least willing to think about the density, and I really appreciate that fact. One thing I noticed is, you know, maybe it could be written into the contract, as you suggested, because Habitat did say that they could apply for the, I always get it wrong, but MISHA, with sixty units. They did mention that, as one of the gentlemen brought up. mention that, as one of the gentlemen brought up, that the parking, you know, if it wasn't enough parking, that it could be adjusted possibly down the road. So it sounds like there is some room for flexibility, and I'd like to see that written into the contract just to protect all of us, as you said, in case the ones don't sell, things like that. As far as the affordable, it is very relative term, as Cam mentioned. But I do want to mention that I moved here 28 years ago, and I moved here because I could afford a home. And I was so excited. I had lived in Chicago, where I had no possibility of buying a house. And I bought a house here, and it was the first house I owned, and I was just so excited to have a home. You know, it was something like, there was a little bit of land. As you mentioned, Mr. Reeser, you know, you mentioned 40 houses on the street. It's different than 40 high-end apartment building. And I think I agree with the woman that mentioned that, I'm not good with names, I'm sorry, but the woman that mentioned about, you know, having a place and having a home that you can buy and you can afford. If we could keep those in the, you know, range where the teachers and the police and people like that really can, you mentioned kids on the street, they need a street to run on. And I think that if we could have more of the homes built, I think you'll find that it will make the community that much stronger and better. And I am all in favor of affordable housing. I'd just like to see more of them be homes that people can buy and love and appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening again. Dave Tuttle, 116 Clinton. As I understand it, what you're doing right now is you are receiving this draft of this agreement, and that subsequently at two weeks, you would presumably go forward with a vote on it here. My suggestion, and I certainly appreciate the fact that you had some real good discussions and some questions about it, and I think that this has been very helpful. Certainly, the presentation was very helpful. I probably disagree with some of the things I saw on that here. But my suggestion might be that, in fact, you push back and say, thank you for this draft. We'd like you to address some of our questions and come back in two weeks and introduce an updated draft that has resolved some of our questions. And then two weeks later, you would then be able to go ahead and proceed with it. I think there's a whole lot of things that need to be done to get through the information. And so sticking to a, it's introduced and two weeks later we're going to vote on it, might be a little bit quick on it. Specifically, the plan document was not attached. So obviously, the draft of the agreement has some exhibits that weren't attached. And so the numbers of units, any of these numbers about the housing things, the stuff that was here, none of that was included in the publicly available information that was presented to us. So I don't really know exactly what the plan is. Maybe you do, but you've gotten a different document than what was shared with us then. But that's fine. I mean, if there is concurrence around, well, this is the current plan, let's just have it so we all know what that is. The density, we've already talked about the density. The density is an issue. I certainly appreciate the fact that you want to try to make sure that we can come up with a solution to get this done. My take on it, as a CFO negotiating agreements with billion-dollar companies, is you've got to make sure that the other party is doing their part of it. And I would interpret it that maybe your consultant and Habitat is really still, I would agree, is that Habitat and their consultants are pushing us down a path. And there's, you're listening to the community, and you guys have had some good views on this. Is there really consensus about what we need? How many rental units do we need? What are the income levels that we've got? How many of these housing things do we need? And you should be forcing Habitat to say, yes, we will have a plan that meets your requests, South Haven. I would suggest, as a CFO, I would never approve the zoning ordinances until I had concurrence from Habitat. Because once you've approved the zoning ordinance, that's one thing off their box, and they're out of the next thing, and it's taking leverage away from you here. I would disagree specifically with the remedies. You made some comments about, we have very significant remedies here. I would disagree with that. It's just that your remedies are essentially, you can pull the plug in and say, we're not going to go forward with the next stage. Well, that doesn't really help us here to get done what we want. We want to go forward with something. But let's say they build the apartments, or we go through and we sell them, and they develop the first apartments. You had it dead on when you said substantially conforms to the plan. I can think of probably three scenarios where it turns out consistent with the plan, and probably 50 that it doesn't. There are zero remedies under the agreement for what we, as a town, can do if what they actually build is substantially different than that. Or two years from now, if the licensing and the permits go away and the tax credits aren't there, they're sitting there with the property that they're just going to say, we can go ahead and rent out and do whatever. And we, as a community, no longer have the housing that we want. There is no remedy in the agreement for that. So I think that the remedies need some very significant, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. My final point, I guess, would be, I was really stumped by the for-sale limitations to say, the properties can only be sold over the next 25 years for $250,000 inflation-adjusted. And I guess I would ask each of you that are homeowners, if you knew that you cannot make a profit on the property that you've bought, would you really be willing to buy that property for $250,000 if you knew that inflation adjustment was the maximum that you can sell it for, three years, five years? Why would I buy a home and invest in a home and spend the maintenance money to go ahead and do that if the most I can resell it for when I leave is whatever that inflation-adjusted increase was? So I think it would seem you're going to have a problem trying to resell those homes if you've capped them for the next 25 years. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
All right. Anybody else?
Hi, Mary Lynn Boogie. This is really just, Gabriel Drive, 70 Gabriel Drive. This is really just a question. With your presentation, I don't remember, perhaps I overlooked it. Was it online for everyone to see? Did it come out with the?
It did not.
No, it wasn't, it was not online yet.
Okay. And because those two items, this one and the one coming up, were added belatedly to the agenda, and so with it being a holiday weekend and stuff, really didn't have time to look at a lot of what was there. So I wasn't sure if I had overlooked it, because I think it had a good information in it. And the other thing I would like to say, I really would hope that you would, you've already heard about the density and the parking, and you know that. But I think you also really should examine and study whether, what is proposed is going to meet the people that you intended this to be for. And I think some very good points have been brought up regarding that it's probably not going to be suitable for what you've been selling it for, which is the teachers and the police and so on and so forth. And really look at that and see if what is proposed is going to actually serve the population you said you wanted to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right.
Jean-Joseph, 106 Orchard Drive. Are we going to get to see the presentation with the actual income levels and with some of the answers to a lot of the issues that were brought up before this two-week deadline where you guys vote?
The income levels in the presentation are the proposed income levels.
I'm just saying, in terms of the way that, like, with actual, where we can understand it, rather than...
The 60% and 40% and stuff like that. But the dollar amounts there?
The dollar amounts, yeah. Can you do that?
Go ahead.
Yes, we can provide the MISHDA table that breaks all that out.
Okay. And will we have access to seeing that before?
I will put that table, as well as this presentation, on the city's Overton website tomorrow.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right, I had a request. We're going to take another five-minute break, because that took a minute, and then we'll go on to our last two items, so.
Okay. I make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Motion to take a five-minute recess. See you in five. Make a motion to go back into session. All right, second. We have a motion and a second to go back into session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who know, we're back in session. All right, next, city council will be asked to introduce a proposed ordinance, again, introduce a proposed ordinance providing a property tax exemption and service charge in lieu of taxes for the Habitat Company's first proposed rental phase on the southernmost portion of the Overton site. Just a motion to introduce, if there's an interest.
I'll make a motion to introduce a proposed ordinance providing a property tax exemption and service charge in lieu of taxes for the Habitat Company's first proposed rental phase on the southernmost portion of the Overton site.
Tuck it. All right, motion and a second. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. I worked, City Attorney Nick Curcio worked on this pilot, which is a payment in lieu of tax ordinance. And so this would just be an introduction of. And Nick would go into more detail in this. This would be required for the MISHDA application and will be contingent upon this. So Nick, do you want to go ahead and talk about this?
Yes. So this ordinance is based on the template provided by MISHDA for these types of housing developments. What it essentially does is grants a tax exemption that's provided by state law under the statute that created MISHDA. And then it provides a substitute exaction or charge that would be paid instead. And as provided in this ordinance, that would be equal to 3% of what's called shelter rents collected in the project. And speaking with the city's consultant, Ryan Kilpatrick, he said that that was a fairly typical arrangement for these types of agreements. Again, the substance is taken very largely from the MISHDA template and is used in communities around the state for these types of projects. That's pretty much all my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council has.
Council, questions? Everyone understands the concept of pilot? I mean, if you want to further clarify, I mean, I know, I mean, just to understand a pilot, payment instead of paying normal taxes.
Correct. So this is essentially a tax abatement, but it's not a complete exemption from taxes. There's a substitute payment rather than being calculated based on the value of the property, which is how property taxes are normally calculated. It's calculated based on a percentage of rents. Here specifically, 3% rents. That was the number that Habitat requested. We reviewed that number with Housing Consultant Ryan Kilpatrick. He said that was in the normal range for these projects. And the other, you know, the substance of the agreement, the terms which that payment would be made, again, is typical and right from the MISHDA template for these types of arrangements.
Okay. Nick?
Yes.
So I may be off on this. Correct me. Are we talking about what Ryan calls the payment in lieu of taxes or pilot, right?
Yes.
Okay. He also told me that we could, and a resident asked this question, it's sitting here, and she asked the question, who's going to pay for the police, the extra police and everything that have to go through this community, and a taxpayer shouldn't be paying that, which I agree. And he said what we could do on city council, and again, I'm not the expert on this, but something he called a municipal services agreement. You're familiar with that?
Yes.
So are we going to talk about that, or are we going to approve that, or where do we go with that?
That's not something that's being proposed. That's the first I've heard of that idea in connection with this project.
Okay, so that'll be a second issue then. Another issue, another time.
Well, if the city wants to...
Well, if the city wants to do that, that is something that we would need to do now. That just hasn't been presented to me as something that I needed to prepare and negotiate. That is something that communities do. It's essentially a side agreement where some additional payment, in addition to these percentages of rental payments, are made to a city. If that's a concept that we, you would, the majority of council would like to pursue, we can try to do that. Again, for the October deadline, we're in a pretty short window, but that, I've worked on agreements like that before and have a good template that we could use.
And you're right, because that's what he said. It's up to the city, City Council and staff to ask for that. So I would like to propose, however it has to be done, at some point when it's appropriate, to talk about it and try to get that, because I think it's a fair take for the city to have that covered. Okay, sit.
I guess I'd be curious, but Ryan's not here to speak to it, so I mean, you've dealt with him before.
Yes, I've done one of these. It's been years ago, but essentially, it's an agreement to make an additional payment aside from the 3% that, so the payment in lieu of taxes is something that goes through the MISHDA process. This is kind of a side agreement. MISHDA doesn't even necessarily see it, where you say that the property's going to be served by police and fire, and for those reasons, a payment of X amount will be made to the city, and that amount is subject to negotiation, could be installment payments. It's not something that we've commenced negotiations on at this point. Most projects do not have those, in my experience anyway, but it is something that some communities do do.
Okay.
And again, any costs imposed by the city potentially going to affect the amount of the rental rates and for sale rates and things like that, I think that's why we hadn't pursued it as a staff, but it's something that we theoretically could pursue.
Yeah, because we'd have to understand both pieces. If it impacts rents, that is counter to what we're trying to do here.
Right, I mean, it would add to the bottom line of this project and, you know, something that they could then try to pass along.
Council, interest, thoughts at this juncture?
Well, I'm not sure how much additional police and fire and all the services that we would need for this particular effort, and I'm kind of leaning toward if it is something that's going to impact the overall, you know, affordability of the people trying to live here, then I guess I'm not inclined to pursue it, I guess.
I feel the same.
But I think we paid a consultant to give us advice. We can at least talk about it with Habitat or talk about it amongst ourselves and see if it's worthwhile. I don't, I'm with George. I don't want to add anything that's going to raise the prices of the rents and the price of the homes, but something tells me, as a businessperson, that there's money on the table Habitat's making, that if other communities have been smart enough to have that agreement, maybe we can take a few percent to cover our extra costs, because there will be some cost for the extra police and the extra utilities or whatever, so why not pursue it? And we could pursue it, you said, after this other agreement's done, or not?
It's, at least the one that I've worked on, it was done in conjunction with the approval of the MISHDA application. It could theoretically come later, because it's not something that's reviewed by MISHDA, but generally, the developer kind of wants to know what its costs are at the time that the pilot is approved. It's something I could certainly, again, said we're going to follow up with both Habitat and with Mr. Kilpatrick with all the comments from tonight. We can talk with him about this, see if he's seen any recent ones or has any proposals for what a good number to propose to Habitat would be, and we can look into this before your next meeting.
Okay. And again, this isn't-
You've seen a lot of agreements like this, not this agreement. I'm talking about communities helping developers to do affordable housing, right?
Yes, I'd say I've been involved in probably six or so MISHDA projects, and of those, however many it's been, only one has had this type of municipal service contract that you're speaking of.
So is selling, and I don't want to take everybody's time, but selling a prime piece of real estate, because this is prime, the location is a great location, to sell this for $100,000, and I understand all the reasons why, and I completely support being $100,000 or less, I have no problem with that, but if Habitat's getting a really good deal, and you know better, because you've done other deals like this, then to me, to ask for this extra money wouldn't seem out of line. But like George, I don't want to hold this whole thing up over this.
It's, again, it's something I can talk with Ryan about. We can propose to Habitat, and we can present how they respond at your next meeting. And if they're favorable, we can come with an agreement. Agreement doesn't require two readings, we could have it ready.
And since we're paying for a consultant, maybe we ask the consultant to give you ideas how to negotiate it.
Yeah, it would be helpful if he could provide some recent numbers. And again, I have a draft contract, I'm sure I can get to that and put it together in a matter of minutes. It's just a matter of getting to terms that are acceptable to Habitat.
Thanks. Maybe then at the same time, we could just review, maybe go with, review with the police chief, fire chief, their thoughts on time, coverage, just get some insight from them, maybe look at what we're anticipating generating in tax, you know, through the pilot, whatnot, and just put all that together for us to look at.
Sure, you can do that.
That might be helpful. But at this time, we could at least, looks like we can introduce, knowing this is not a MISHDA-related issue. This will be off to the side, so, okay. All right, so let's, I guess, any public, right? We got a motion, we got a second, right? We got that? Public comments?
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. Thank you, Commissioner, City Councilman Risa, for bringing up the funding aspect. I know that's been brought up multiple times. I estimate about 300 people. If there's 144 units with the bedroom distribution that's been shown, would be added to this 500 and .6 or so acres of property. I think that's a lot of people. I think that will affect police, especially with the density, especially with everything that's been going on, and I think it's, I'm hesitant to say this, but, you know, asking the police to do more without increasing their force is similar to defunding them, and we can't do that. We need to support them. I mean, from my understanding, from the income, from the posting on the wall of what a first year police officer would make, they would not qualify to hear, except for those five units, which seem kind of fishy to me, because the full number in the below 60% equaled 58, and the top number that included five and the other above 60 also equalled 58, and my math, I don't think is that bad. I just think this pilot program is premature at this time. We've heard discussion that these negotiations usually are ahead of, are at the same time, simultaneously, and this is the first that the attorney is hearing of this, but it's not the first time that it's been raised. So this is just a case in point where our concerns are being left to the crisis point so they can be conveniently ignored, because we have to have housing, and you cannot, you have not even shown that this housing will really address the missing middle that I believe is between 80 and 120%. I've asked for delineations of the percent AMI, so we have a clear, transparent appreciation for what these units are going to be, and we haven't gotten that. In fact, after I requested that August 30th, the ranges actually increased, so it's more murky, not less murky. This is being rushed through, it needs to have the brakes put on, there are so many unanswered questions. We need more than two weeks to address all the issues that I will be providing in written comment, that I would like incorporated as a written submission for this and provided for everyone to see. This is, and this pilot program assumes everything's going to go forward, but we've already said we don't know what the PUD's going to do, or really, is it, well, tell them we don't know what the PUD's going to do, but it's in the agreement, it's the way it's been since April 27th, except for the number of parking, so it's going to go full speed ahead. The actions speak louder than words. This is premature, a lot more needs to be done. Two weeks is insufficient for all of the time that's been allowed to the city attorney to look at it and us not to have any input on something that will have such a significant input with adding such a significant amount of people in a small area and not taking into consideration the impact on our neighborhoods.
Thank you again. Anybody else?
Mary Lynn Bogey, 70, Gabriel Drive. Just again, a question. Could you please just clarify how the 3% was arrived at?
3% was requested by Habitat and discussed as a staff.
And you said you've worked on several other projects with MISHDA and where they've had pilots. What, are they always 3% or have they been other percentages?
I'm not certain off the top of my head what the percentages are. The percentages are set by ordinance and can be adjusted.
The percentages sent by ordinance?
Yes.
And do we have an ordinance that-
This is a proposed ordinance.
Okay, I understand that, but so in other words, we're setting the precedent now, so it could be more than this.
Correct.
So I'm just curious as to, and I understand that you don't want to raise the rents, however, I think you do need to be responsible for seeing that this project is at least covering the costs that is occurring to the city, because one of the problems with coming here is someone who's drawing on a more modest income is that the taxes are very high here, and unless this proposal, unless they're covering the costs that it costs the city, well, then what you're doing is increasing the taxes on people who might be able to afford a house, but they can't really afford the constantly increasing taxes. So just keep that in mind. Is this really sufficient to cover the costs of this housing so that it doesn't increase the taxes for everybody else? Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Lynn, appreciate it. Anybody else? Council, any other comments? I've got a motion, I've got a second, again, to introduce if we feel like we're ready. Ready for it? Ready for it? All right, we got a motion, a second to introduce the proposed ordinance providing the property tax exemption. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those no? It passes. Next, City, Bill Hunter, you still here? Oh, you're a good man. We will be asked to receive an update from our DPW director, Mr. William Hunter, who gets a prize for the longest wait.
Your Honor, City Council, this will be DPW's update. Phoenix Street Project Bike Path, city is expected to receive $144,783 in federal funds for the bike path and $320,000 for the road resurfacing. Bids have been received and staff is waiting for official project start date and from the contractor, Ann Prine Newhoff. Concrete standpipe replacement, staff is working with Baird and Company on the financing for this project. Covert Township flushing rates, CHASA approved a flushing rate, my apologies, on their meeting on 7/27/2021. Staff needs to send a letter to Covert Township to inform them of the new rate. The distribution system materials inventory, or DSMI, this is a requirement for the Safe Water Drinking Act from Eagle. Eagle now is requiring a verification of the final DSMI, which will require us to do a four-point verification of 551 sites. This will involve pothole enrollment, factoring down to the curb stop, and then setting up appointments. Staff is working on the schedule for this. The new substation, we've given the OKAVE to AEP to start the design process. Once we have that in place, we'll know what the new feed will be for this new, for the new substation. Cross connection inspections, CHASA has contracts with HydroCorp to perform the state-mandated cross connection control programs, and this is through the Safe Water Drinking Act. Part of these inspections include, these inspections include getting in and inspecting the facility, plus also testing the backflow prevention assemblies. Drain commission project on Center Street, it is complete. That project was a two-stage, was to do a two-stage inlet and soften the slope to facilitate debris removal in the ravine. AMI project, the stations are completed at the elevated storage tanks, but due to COVID, actually, the meters we can't get. And that's actually, we're seeing that throughout vehicles, that's why you're looking at your car lots, you see them empty, it's chips. So the meters won't be in until the spring of next year, and that's when we'll be able to implement the project. So the substations are in, I'm sorry, not substations, the AMI stations are in, we just need now the meters. Ailworth, the Ailworth non-motorized path, the total construction for this project is 315,000. The city will pay 180, and CMAC program will pay 13478. CMAC is a congestion mitigation air quality program, and this is a grant that staff applied for for a bike path. We're about 10% complete on that. topo survey is complete and preliminary design has been started, and we should be the summer of 2022. Inflow and infiltration, or INI inspections, we're conducting those in Casco Township, and that's due to some recent, it's due to actually a lift station, we've had some issues with INI there, but due to recent sewer flows that we have, we're going to be reaching out to HydroCorp about conducting those inspections on all CHASA members within the system. BPU rules and regulations, staff was, will be presenting an amendment to City Council, well, first to the BPU, then to City Council, to address methodology applying the payment in lieu of taxes for the electric fund. And Nukem Beach stormwater outfall, we addressed, actually, we had some washing out underneath, and that was just due to the storm water that would come and wash out the end of the walkway. We put in a concrete wall towards the end, and we reshaped actually the existing rip raft there, and that was able to address the issues we were having at Nukem Beach. Is there any questions City Council has on these projects and any other projects, DPW?
Questions, comments? 2022 sidewalks, Ailworth, right? Final? I heard you say it, 2022.
I do have a question, actually.
Yes.
It's actually, it's not related to some of this, but the electric vehicle station, are we going to put down signs or something at some point just to, because there's been a lot of vehicles not parking there that are, people are just looking for spots. I totally get it. I tried the station out, it's awesome.
Okay.
It's not as quick as my house, but it's quick, so.
I can actually reach back out to the contractor and see if they can actually do that. I thought they were supposed to do that, but I don't know why they haven't quite yet, but I can do that.
Yeah, per their agreement, they're supposed to provide all the signage and making sure that they're well delineated, that this is for EV usage only.
Cool.
Just real quick, you said, or in your report it states, and I know it's late, but the EDGIL keeps changing the requirements of drinking water and this and that, based on the state of Michigan. Are our representatives voting for this, or is EDGIL just taking it upon themselves to make new rules for city governments to go by? I'm just trying to figure out why, how this is coming down.
Our state legislators have actually voted on all these amendments to the Safe Water Drinking Act. It started actually, I want to say probably about four years ago. Matter of fact, I would say longer than that, I would say probably about seven, when they started making amendments to, and it started with the cross connection control rule, so I'm sorry.
But are they voting, are they voting for this detail, or are they voting to have EDGIL implement something and EDGIL's just digging away deep? Because our situation here on this side of the state, and you've told me yourself, is totally different than Flint.
Yes, it is.
Our drinking water situation is totally different than getting it out of the Detroit River. I'm just wondering how detailed it is. Is somebody sitting behind a desk not knowing that kind of stuff? And I've sensed your frustration in the past, and it's costing this city hundreds of thousands of dollars. Who do we talk to? Who do we talk to? Who do we complain to?
Well, I would say your state, your state representatives. That's what we need to do. We need to tell them to, right now, base everything on science, base everything. And we need to not do, to me, you shouldn't do a broad brush stroke and treat every community the same. I believe every community's water quality needs to be evaluated individually, but they'll never do that. It's, it actually is too cumbersome. I don't think they will. I think they can, I just don't think they, it makes it too complicated. And that point you made about the water quality, and it is about water quality and the source you get it from. I don't believe actually on the west, the west side of Michigan, where everybody's drawing water from Lake Michigan, should be treated by groundwater situations or river water quality, which is totally different chemistry. And there are, there are chances when the law is being promulgated, and there's these, there's these, and you can actually go to them or you can actually go online and submit. And I have submitted objections to them, but believe it or not, a lot of people don't attend them. And they're doing it all by the law. They are, they post it. It's all regimented, they do. But a lot of people, when the law finally gets promulgated and it gets, and it gets implemented, it's, it's even a surprise, I believe, to the people within the industry, my industry. There's some of them that still don't understand it themselves. But to answer your question, we do. I make sure I object them every time. And the last conference I went to, I was having an M-depth discussion with Eagle on the next round of uncontaminated mandatory regulations. It's called the UCMR 5. And what that is, is it's, it's basically Eagle's way of saying, these are going to be the next chemicals we're going to regulate. And UCMR 5 is, they're unregulated contaminants. They're just not underneath the act yet, but they will be. And this one here will be all PFOS. And that actually worries me because of, on the wastewater end, because those costs we're going to incur. And I hope they're going to use it based on the science that they're going to gather and not use this as what they could use it as and arbitrarily raise them up higher than what they should be.
Well, maybe it would help possibly if we had the support of the council to possibly send some type of a letter or something to our state representatives as a voting council and said, this is how we feel about these things. Can staff look into something like that? See if we can get the support of the rest of the council and maybe as one group, as a city of South Haven, say, we don't believe it's right, we protest this or object to it. And so at least our state representatives, maybe it can be brought to the public's attention and put some pressure on them. I don't know, just a thought.
Absolutely, we can, we can look into that for you.
That's all.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Get out of here.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Ready to go?
Item 15, Citizens of the Autumn, so we'll be heard on items, not on the agenda.
One of us had to go home and go to bed already, but there are seven of us here that live on a street that was put in in 1962. That's Lee Street.
Did you hear your name and address, sorry?
747 Lee Street.
I'm sorry, your name was, sorry?
Dorothy Lockwood. We're here, we want our street done. We don't want a Band-Aid. We want it done. We want it, it's one of the worst streets in South Haven. Not that there's not a multitude of those, but we don't want a Band-Aid. And Jeff or Mr. Arnold, if you would drive down Lee Street on the way home, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Tom, what?
Well, we'll make sure and we, we'll take a look at our street list and we'll...
We were on the street list twice already, and then we always get bumped. So look twice?
Yeah, we will, absolutely.
All right.
There's a little science to it, but we'll, we'll make sure we look at it. So we appreciate your comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
The gentleman that just spoke, Bill Hunter, hears you and he'll have an answer for, he'll have an answer for me. I'll ask him.
I'll take a ride down Lee Street. You're coming up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go slow. Will do.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I've been humbled by a near-death experience that altered my whole life, age, and COVID. What those three things or experiences have shown me and taught me is that we have more in common as a people than what we realize. And I vowed, not knowing how much time I was going to have left, to be a voice to those who felt like they didn't have a voice. With that being said, several residents have come to me in regards to the latest signs that have been put up in, on the south side of Ward 1. Now, this more, this might relate, be pointed more towards Kate or Bill Hunter, but I did promise that I would bring it up tonight. I, as much as I support, and I think Kate is doing a great job. She had some big shoes to fill, in my opinion, when Brian left. She's doing a tremendous job. I do support the chief of police as well, the staff. But I did promise to bring this up. And I'm against anything, anybody that demonizes the park that I grew up in. I think most of the residents around the park don't have a clue what a bad park is or what an inner-city park looked like. And a lot of times that park area, Elkenberg Park, gets a bad label. And certain residents, one or two residents, are allowed to cry or scream or make complaints, multiple complaints, and the city will respond to it without following the due process. I stood here with Bill Hunter, and I'm not against what he's doing, but I just was glad to have heard what he mentioned last week, a couple of, a couple of meetings ago, when there was some concerns about Monroe Park. And there was restrictions left. Some residents wanted to be made changes around Monroe Park. There was a process that took place. He sent letters, I'm, what I was told, he sent letters out to the residents. And he also met with some residents. I think this is based on his own words. And they chose not to have any more restrictions around Monroe Park. And to him, that was a done deal. Well, a lot of residents in Ward 1 think that putting a four-way stop 50, less than 50 feet away on Elkenberg Street is demonizing our area and very bad. A lot of people are running through that stop sign because after years, we have no clue. It wasn't communicated to us, the residents of that area at all. I blew past it the next morning, and a young lady had to tell me, you just blew past that four-way stop. So I think that should have been communicated to us and the same process should have been allowed as it was for those that lived around, that live around Monroe Park. So if that, if that stop sign stays with less than 50 feet away from the main thruway stop sign for a four-way stop, if that stays, then I'm going to request that you put a stop sign at the corner of South Haven Street in Indiana because from Broadway all the way to past South Haven Street, two blocks past South Haven Street, you don't hit a stop sign. That's a, they drag down that street. So if that, if we're going to lose, use the same mindset of trying to keep the neighborhood safe, then there should be a four-way stop at South Haven and Indiana. And that's probably the case in a lot of other areas. The message that you're giving or portraying is that around the park, there's a lot of speeding, as if that's not the case all around South Haven. So I think the process should have been made, the same process that he used to determine whether or not he was going to make changes around Monroe, around Monroe, Monroe Park. He should have followed that same process by notifying the residents, talking to some of the residents, seeing if they thought that four-way stop made sense at the corner of the Elkenberg Park. So I promised I would bring that up, that, and to them, they felt like that's demonizing the people that live in that area in Monroe, in Elkenberg Park.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? Sold? Kate, City Manager comments?
Well, thank you. For the, for the positive, Shea's Pancake Breakfast went really, really well. Looks like they might net about $4,000 that they'll use to buy a new mannequin that they'll use for EMS training for advanced life support. I do want to just let the council know, we did have a fire rig that was stolen from the Casco Station. And the perpetrator has been, has been apprehended. We have retained the fire truck, but there was a police officer and a police vehicle that was damaged as part of that. The officer seems to be released with minor injuries, but that was a little bit of drama right before this meeting today. So you may see an NMLI article already. I do want to kind of address some of the comments you may have heard, that we do have some new stop signs out. Those are, so those are to increase pedestrian safety. We have them on over on, I think Jeff's area on South Haven Street and Bailey and as well as by Elkenberg. And if you know Bill, Bill really likes the traffic manual, and he really likes to go by science and data. Now, when we do ask for things about like Elkenberg, Elkenberg Park or Monroe Park, we're asking there about where people can park on certain sides of the road. So like taking Elkenberg Park Road itself, it is wide enough for two traffic travel lanes and a parking. And then where you can park on one side of the street. So we'll be sending out letters, surveying the community residents, asking what side of the road they would prefer to have parking on that street because only one side can have parking, so we're going to ask for their input. And that's similar to what we did for the Monroe Park area. We did have some, some residents there who are requesting some additional assistance with controlling maybe activity in the park after hours, but that wasn't necessarily stop signs, stop signs and crosswalks. That all happens with the traffic manuals, which Bill likes to have lots of data and he does it by the book. So with that being said, we have those letters going out to the community around the Elkenberg Park area to ask for some more parking information. With that, I would also just have, ask everyone if they'd like to come out to the prayer walk Saturday at 11:30 at First Congregational. I think that'd be a nice interdenominational effort. Thank you to Pastor Joe and Shama for putting that together to just kind of get the community together for all the things that have been going on this summer. Other than that, those are my comments.
Thanks, Kate. Appreciate it. Counsel comments? On my left?
My only comment is Bailey Avenue between Congress Street and, well, East Wall Street's pretty bad, too. And we're not even on the list. It just says future need. That's all I got.
Kate, mine is just a quick question for you. The City Council Agenda's draft agenda goes out on Wednesdays.
That's correct.
We get it on Wednesdays. The public also?
Oh, yes, it's posted at that time, too. And then we do have some times that we have to do Friday ads. And that's when we do try to get that out as soon as we can. However, we had some, we had some, some people who had to be out. And so there was one person trying to make those updates, and there was a couple of things that happened. So 5:15 is when I was able to get that out the door. And Travis was able to assist me and get that posted to constant contact and everything else, so.
So the draft is Wednesday and the final's Friday.
That's correct.
Mr. Campbell? I want to thank Joe for putting together prayer walk. I think it's great for the community right now. And I want to request a speed bump on green by the bus garage. People drive pretty fast. That's it.
I just want to thank everyone for their input tonight. I know it was a long meeting and a lot of good input, though. So thank you.
I have so much to say. I don't know where to begin. Just kidding, Mary. Just a couple of quick points. Someone asked again and again, what is affordable housing? There is a definition given to us by the consultant, like it or not. It's 30% of gross income. That is the definition, you can agree or not. But I will read one quick thing from this review, which is online. And this is from MISHDA, and they have a department called the Statewide Housing Needs Assessment. And it says, and I'm reading this, 50% of all renters in the state of Michigan and 25% of all homeowners are paying more than they can afford for housing. That's a scary thought. And sometimes we forget we're just this little bubble in the big picture of the country and the state that people are having a hard time getting housing. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, I just, I won't mention the speed bump by my house. I'm good. We all have our favorite racetrack, it sounds like, in front of our homes. So I just want to again, thank everybody for spending the last, last three and a half hours of your life with us tonight and sharing your thoughts, your ideas. It's how we learn. Over the past several weeks, we've had several instances where we've had, you know, I would say is a senseless loss of life. You know, our thoughts and prayers go out to those families that have been impacted. I just want to thank our first responders who were there quickly and have helped remediate those situations. Also want to thank our clergy. I know Pastor Joe is back there, and a variety of them that have helped through a variety of different processes to help us get through that. And I know the prayer walk this weekend is one of them. I'm supposed to be out of town. I wish I could be there, but thanks for organizing. So yeah, hopefully, we will continue to heal from that. And then a positive note, we had a, the first home football game was Thursday night. It was nice, I don't know if anybody made it. It was a relatively normal game. There were people. It was, they won. The band was good, the game was good. So it was nice to see the community kind of back out and about. So there's hope. Get your shots so we can get over this. There you go, there's my last plug. Get your shot. I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.